I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Yuba City City Council of September 5th, 2017. Roll call please.
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeWolff.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here. I would like, after I give the invocation for Curtis, please to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. High your head with me if you wish, please. Thank you, our Lord, Heavenly Father, for your grace and your mercy upon our nation. Thank you for the help that everybody is giving at this time to the ones that have been so damaged and hurt in our nation from our hurricane, Lord. Pray that you would help us to continue supporting them and get them back on their feet. Now, I also thank you, oh God, for the opportunity to serve and to work for this community, to all of us, to be able to put together our minds and try to do what is best for the community with the guidance of their input. Oh, Lord, we pray for this evening and to your glory. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. Me seated. Okay, I'm gonna be doing some proclamations. First one is the Emergency Preparedness Month proclamation. Bill Fuller.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
He's always prepared in such a wonderful way, so very appreciate that. Emergency Preparedness Month.
September is Emergency Preparedness, excuse me, National Preparedness Month in the United States. With the recent activities in Houston, it kinda drives it home even more, although, you know, we had our own incident with Oroville Dam spillway. What we wanted to do, September is the time when our city organization gets geared up for the winter months. We're also, we're hoping that citizens will also do the same to prepare themselves and their families. Two things that we have, one is available on the city's website, it's called Be Prepared Yuba City. It's a 26-page household emergency preparedness booklet that helps you and your family kinda prepare yourself to prepare for and respond to emergencies, be they flooding, severe weather, electrical outages, what have you. The other one that we just wanted to bring up to everybody and pass one out to each of the council members. It's a system that we have at the Yuba City called Rapid Notify. Rapid notify is an emergency mass notification system. We are expanding it to go from strictly home phones, landlines, to include cellphones and emails. That will help us get information out to everybody. In the case of Oroville, where very short time to get that information out, this will help us and help you. It's a self-registration program. You can opt in, you can opt out if you want, but information is available out in the lobby, little brochure. It's available online, that you can go, register, get your information in, and help us, help you get information to you. So, thank you. Now, it's my turn.
I wanted you to get in there first, so they have the background for this. And here is a proclamation. And it's, "Yuba City residents and business owners learned that many valuable lessons from the flood threat and the recent Oroville Dam auxiliary spillway incident in February, as well as watching the tragedy in Houston, which was mentioned, with the damage caused by Hurricane Harvey. Yuba City is joining the Department of Homeland Security and the American Red Cross in a nationwide effort to educate the public and to encourage them to prepare for such emergencies. All Yuba City residents and businesses, business owners are encouraged to plan for their personal preparedness and recognize the need to provide provisions for their families in case of an emergency through preparing an emergency supply kit, making a family emergency plan, and being informed about different threats and getting involved in preparing their communities." You know that our number one threat is flooding of any and all kinds, so we know the directions that we would need to go with that. So, we have information available, as you said, Bill has said, so please avail yourself of that. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., Mayor of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim September 17th, no, September 2017, as Emergency Preparedness Month, and residents and businesses are encouraged to register their home phone, cellphones, and email addresses in the city's Rapid Notify, emergency notification system, so the city can quickly contact residents and business owners and with a timely and important information and instructions during the time of emergency, on this fifth day of September 2017, at the city of Yuba City." Thank you, Bill. And it's available, please take your time and register those numbers, 'cause we'll do the reverse phone call. Everybody will be notified much quicker than it has been in the past. We got improved systems coming and all the time. Thank you. (Applause) We just can't call you by your real name. It just doesn't work. Robert Stoddard, Italian chief. Blessings to you, man. Great to see you, but not great to see you. I'm just gonna hand you the proclamation, so you can have it right now, upon your retirement. You're gonna be greatly missed. You're just one of those gentlemen that was fun to be around, always made things lighter, but when it was serious time, you were down and dirty and got it done, and that was foundation. Anyway, we'll go on. Robert "Bubba" Stoddard retired from the Yuba City Fire Department on September 1st, 2017, it's the other day. For the total of 35 years of service, the last 16 years with Yuba City, Bubba contributed to the growth, success, and professionalism of the Yuba City Fire Department and the firefighting profession. Highlights of his career: Fire Equipment Operator/Shift Supervisor with the Walton Fire Protection District, and EMT-1 with the Bye County Ambulance Company, Volunteer Firefighter with the Sutter County Fire Department, served on various committees and collaterals with Yuba City. He served for approximately 20 years as an instructor, assistant with the Yuba College's Fire Academy, and served and participated in every aspect of a modern fire department. Now, I therefore, now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council of the city of Yuba City, do hereby honor and commend Robert Stoddard Bubba for his service, just doesn't work, Robert, sorry, to the Yuba City Fire Department and the city of Yuba City, and to the people of Yuba City and Sutter County, and commend him for 35-year career in the fire service. (Applause) 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 I must say, that's a hard one. Okay, I'll have a little bit more presentations a little bit later, some that came in a little late, so we'll get to that later. Computers like to turn themselves off when you walk away. Okay, moving on. Item number three, public hearing of formation of a Community Facilities District, or CFD number 2017-01, to fund municipal service. Darren Gale.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening regarding our city's first Community Facilities District for Services. The city council has heard about this item a couple of times, most recently in June, you adopted what's called a Resolution of Intent, which was the first process of establishing a community, Community Facilities Districts. Our CFD is actually required as part of our development agreements and as projects come forward before the planning commission and city council, it's part of the growth policies. So, it's a required condition, and it ensures new development pays for its impacts to the community to pay for our services. What do the CFDs pay for? These are all the items that can be paid for through a Services CFD. The ones in bold are the ones that are included within the city's CFD. We currently have approximately five projects that are, have been adopted that require a CFD. Tonight, one project is actually, we've received the paperwork or the ballots to actually come forward and annex into a CFD 2007-1. The one project is Valencia Estates. It's a 39-lot, a single-family residential project on the north side of town by Inner West, Inner West Homes. It's a, it's also, it's also our first new development project since the recession, where they've gone in, cut new roads, put in all the water, sewer, curb, gutter, and sidewalk. The CFD rates, this CFD includes two rates, one for single-family residential at $425 annually, and the second for multifamily for $310 annually per unit, per multifamily door, not, when I say unit, not just the entire facility. So, tonight, the action is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution of formation for CFD 2017-1 for municipal services. I can answer any questions that the council might have at this time. If not, I'd ask that you conduct the public hearing.
Are there any comments or questions at this time? We all have actually a copy of the, I have a copy of the Inner West ballot saying that they would like to enter, so it's right here, evidence. With that, open the public hearing to discuss pros or cons for against, let's see, item. Seeing no speakers, I'll bring it back to the council for further consideration and discussion if necessary. I see no discussion. I will ask for action, please.
Do the mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion with staff's recommendations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous decision. Thank you very much. Now, moving on to item number four, where we're opening some bidding decisions. Bog Road Rehabilitation Project, we're gonna recommend to award a bid. Mr. Moody.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, members of council. Adam, before you is the project award for Bog Road Rehab Project. Buck and May, staff came to you and we talked about project rehabilitate Bog Road from Railroad to Bog Avenue, Bog to Garden Highway, excuse me. So, from Railroad to Garden Highway, to do a concrete, do an asphalt concrete overlay, AC overlay, and widen the south side to put in some bike lanes. And so, that went through the Caltrans process, we got approved, we bid the project, and we received three bids with the, with the low, with the low bid being Tiger Construction for $788,000. Knife River and Lehman were right behind them, quite a bit of separation in the price. We think the price separation based on input from Knife River was, there's a lot of storm-related emergency work going on right now, and so, so they weren't going after it quite as, quite as well as Tiger. So, it's a nice little project, the road definitely needs it. From these pictures, you could see, just from the truck track, the truck traffic and the heavy use over the years, it's really alligator and it needs the improvements. So, with that, I'm recommending that we award the contract to Tiger Construction in the amount of the bid, and authorize the finance director to transfer $70,000 from our road rehabilitation account to the project account to cover any contingency items. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council at this time? Saying none? Looking forward for a?
Move staff's recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Another unanimous decision. It was nice to see that it was below the estimate, 'cause we'd been having difficulty with that, so mainly because of the volatility of construction going on right now. Okay, moving on to number five, purchase of one digester mixing pump, awarding the bid. Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The city's wastewater treatment facility utilizes anaerobic digestion to treat and process biosolids. Anaerobic digestion is a biological treatment that's performed with the absence of air, and it converts organic pollutants to methane gas. The digester mixing pump failed earlier this year, and it's critical to the ongoing operation and efficiency of the digester. A formal bid was issued and two bids were received. The low bidder is Gerlick Mitchell of Cypress, California, in the amount of $51,844.65. Staff also looked at the option of repairing the existing pump, and it actually came out more than purchasing a new pump. And so, with that, staff is recommending award to Gerlick Mitchell, then also requesting a supplemental appropriation to the wastewater account. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? I will make, it's too bad that this happened, but we know that our system is aging, and you never know what's gonna happen on those, those types of systems with all the corrosiveness, and things are hidden pretty easily with that kind of material floating around. Looking for action?
Make a motion for staff's recommendation.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous decision. Thank you again. Moving on to number six, we got a variety of people coming up today. Purchase one John Deere 1,600-wide area mower, another bid awarding.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here requesting council to consider the purchase of a John Deere mower from Valley Truck and Tractor of Yuba City in the amount of $49,950. Through the budget process in June, council had approved the purchase of this expenditure of $55,000. However, through our RFQ process, staff received the lowest bid from Valley Truck and Tractor of Yuba City. If council approves this purchase, it will exceed our over $50,000 of expenditures throughout the fiscal year, which requires council's approval as well. I'd like to thank President Mark Room-Garden. If you have any questions, I believe he's here tonight just for this item to talk, if you have any questions.
Any questions? I'm not hearing any, so I'd like, action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinions of the group. Number seven, written requests, it says, "Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allotted five minutes to speak." Do we have any of those?
We receive none.
Other than, other than the proclamation?
We receive none.
Okay, thank you. Now, here, because of a late proclamation, we were able to fit it under this category of written request, so I will do another presentation. Would the people from Off the Leash Dog Park, representatives, please? Chris Parent, Sue Schaefer, and Liz Jansen. I'm going to hand the proclamations to you. And then face, I'll face the group. Thank you. Okay.
No worries.
I remember 2003, many of us also. I remember 2003, and many of us do, when the park, Dog Park was trying to be established, and the efforts it went, and turned out to be not quite as easy as, and we always think some projects, we think it goes easy, and it's just a lot of work to get done. But, we did wanna recognize the history so far of that and the success. And here it is. In 2003, a group of individuals, Chris, Sue, and Liz, sought to bring Yuba City a park dedicated to allowing dogs to run free and socialize in their own dog park. They held many fundraising events, such as Paw stuff feeds. That one I delighted, I like that one. And Dog-a-thons. And raised over $10,000 to construct the fences and other improvements, such as the benches, shade trees, and irrigation. The Off the Leash Dog Park at 2050 Wild River Drive officially opened to the public on Thursday, June 26, 2009. The president, Chris Parent, treasurer, Sue Schaefer, and secretary, Liz Jansen, have volunteered countless hours to ensure the success of the park, and have added to the happiness and quality of life of our community, both people and dogs. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim and recognize the three founding volunteers of Off the Leash Dog Park, and commend them for their dedication and congratulate them on the success of the park, and done on this day, the 5th of September, 2017. Thank you so much for the efforts that you've done, and it's been a great thing for, absolutely, I'll hand it to you.
Never being one to be shy, I'd like to call everybody's attention to the fact that on November 3rd, Friday night, at the Veterans Hall here, we are going to have a major fundraiser. We will have the first whiskey tasting and dinner in the city. We have six, we have six craft breweries bringing their wares in, and we are hoping that we can get a good turnout. Thank you.
Very interesting. So, November 3rd may be a momentous and remembered evening in Yuba City, hopefully for the best reasons. Wonderful product being I brought in. They're gonna, go ahead and leave, and we'll let them go. Okay, moving on to number eight, appearance of interest citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing the general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. I have one card from Dale McDowell. And it is on water rates.
Name is Dale McDowell, and this is in reference to the last meeting I was here, I drew attention to that, on the water rates that, I was told a little bit frustrated, but really not frustrated. I read the water rate thing that was sent out on the previous rates, and the new rates to go into effect on July 1st. They actually went in on June 1st. So, I think there's a really big mistake was made. So, last year, it was 8-1 that they increased. This year was supposed to be 7-1, July 1st, but they made it June 1st. So, that is a, and then I asked for explanation, was supposedly given, you know, to give explanations for the reason. Well, number one, we need the money. Why didn't you ask, when I was given some additional information that I requested, and you wanted to bring it to the council? You're the only one that complained. So, this is a tremendous amount of money that the mayor people of Yuba City has been taking advantage of, so I think there should be a refund, adjustment made to that, and correct that mistake, that go back according to what was printed and sent out with the bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request items, specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anything on the consent calendar that anybody has any? Saying none, I'm looking for action.
Do the mayor.
Yes.
Like to approve the consent calendar items nine through 16.
Thank you. Second? You got a second, Mr. Councilman Harris? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none opposition, it passed unanimously. So, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 17, general items, and it's the purchase of one Type 1 fire engine and one rescue vehicle. Fire Chief Pete Daly. Good to see you tonight.
Good to see you too. Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, members of the city council. First and foremost, I'm really excited to see the support that I have tonight to purchase a new engine and new rescue. Not, not that it doesn't put a lot of pressure on the council, but we'll try and keep that refrained as much as possible tonight, so I'll try and keep the crowd at bay the best I can, so, thanks for the support, I appreciate it. So, I'm here to talk to you tonight about a purchase of a new engine and new rescue. Couple of years ago, we were able to go purchase a couple engines last year. As you know, when we went through the economic downturn, we had a challenge with purchasing some of our equipment, so we were on hold for a while, but we had the ability to kinda catch up and purchase a couple pieces of equipment a few years ago, and we're at, we're at a point tonight where we're gonna need to purchase another engine and then a rescue, which I'll talk about briefly. But you guys know my motto where I come from, and my motto is get in the right engine with the right people, do the right location, in the right time to do the right thing, and part of that is having the equipment to do that, so that's why we're here tonight. So, what we're looking at replacing is two older frontline emergency response vehicles. One of them's an engine on the left, was actually 1995 Freightliner, so we got our use out of that, and that was actually from the Walton Fire Protection District. We inherited that piece of equipment, we merged with them back in 2001, so it's seen its use of life there. We're also looking at replacing Air 7, which is a 1989 rescue unit. I was actually here for three years, and 23 years old at that time when we purchased this one, so we've got our use out of that one as well, I think. These two vehicles will go to auction, if approved, and funds will go back into the Vehicle Replacement Fund to help fund the next vehicles. Like I said, we purchased Engine 3 and Engine 7 a couple of years ago. The engine that we'll be looking at purchasing this time will be almost identical to this. It'll have a few twists on it, but basically the same type of engine. We're also looking at purchasing a Ford 550 Rescue. It'll have some capabilities I'll talk about in a second, but basically it have what's called an air cascade system, which is basically a jockey pump, which allows us to increase pressure from one bottle to the next bottle, so that we can get proper pressures in our self-contained breathing apparatus that we wear on our backs, so we can fill them up at the fire scene when we take down the air, when we use the air. It'll also have light capability, it'll also have 20 spare bottles on it, and it'll have other rescue equipment. So, a little bit on the background, the new Type 1 fire engine on the left there, the specification for this engine was developed by a department committee. I got a group of about nine to 12 people together. I got a group of about nine to 12 people together. Actually, the person that ran the committee was an engineer in our department, it wasn't a manager or a supervisor, because engineers know best what kind of equipment they need, and he did a really good job, Chris Johnson, of putting the committee together with support from other staff to develop what type of engine that we needed. The engine will be similar to the other two engines I shown on the previous slide. This purchase will make four out of our, four out of our five first-out engines fairly new, with life expectancies of 25 years plus. So after this purchase, four of the five engines that we use on a daily basis will be fairly new, and so we'll be in pretty good shape over the next 10 to 15, 20 years as we purchase this vehicle. The rescue on the right, our new Cascade and Air and Light Rescue, these specifications were also done by the same committee, they worked on this one as well. This is a new, new piece of equipment for us, it's replacing a piece of equipment, but also has some new features. This rescue will serve as our Rescue 1, and complement our current SAFER staffing program and pattern that we have, but at the same time, it's not, we're not depending on this unit to fulfill the SAFER grant. If we don't have the SAFER grant and the staffing, it'll still be used for our Cascade air supply, carrying our air bottles, and having the lighting capability. It also frees up an engine at the scene of an incident. On the analysis, Pierce has provided consistent high-quality apparatus, that's who we're looking at to purchase this vehicle from, it's from Pierce Manufacturing. Burton's is the sales, Golden Fire State Fire Apparatus out of Modesto, and they're the repair center and the dealer. Pierce has been open since 1913, they're one of the world's largest fire engine manufacturers back in Wisconsin, we've had very good success with them. A large part, a large amount of our equipment is Pierce equipment. Our fleet maintenance is very familiar with Pierce for repairs, and our fire personnel are very familiar and well-trained in Pierce fire apparatus. We're piggybacking on the request for proposal bidding procedure and policies of the National Purchasing Partners and Fire Rescue GPO through a competitive bid process. Will also be taking advantage of a multiple fire apparatus purchase along with 100% prepayment option, which will save the city about 47, a little over $47,000. So one of the goals is, the reason I like to buy two apparatus at a time instead of one, even though it's a little more expensive, if I know I have to buy two, is I get a price break for buying multiple apparatus, and also if we do the prepayment option, I can save quite a bit of money. So we're kind of putting perspective here. The cost for the new Type 1 fire engine's $595,561.66. The new rescue unit's about $273,352. Cost for both vehicles is $868,913.67. Our current budget, I did budget 846308 in the current budget, so I'll be asking for a supplemental appropriation of $22,605.67. At that time, when we were putting together the budget, I didn't have the exact, exact cost on the engine and rescue, so I had to make my best guess. I'm also gonna be asking for a supplemental appropriation request for equipment of $40,000. Basically, $20,000 goes to the computers and modems and systems for both apparatus, and the balance of the $20,000 will go towards fire hose and other miscellaneous equipment for the engine. So what's, last slide here, I know I got a write, a lot of writing, I apologize, but I want to be real clear on what we were asking for. So the staff recommendation is to authorize a purchase of one Pierce Philosse Type 1 Triple Combination Pumper Fire Engine, and for one Ford 550 Fire Rescue Unit with a Cascade lighting system in the amount of $868,913.67. I'm also gonna be asking that you approve multiple equipment purchase and 100% prepayment option, which allows me to get a discount of $47,637.92. I'm also gonna ask for, authorize an additional $40,000 in supplemental appropriation for computers, modems, fire hose, and miscellaneous equipment for both vehicles from account 661069415, which is our Vehicle Replacement Fund. And then finally, I'm gonna ask you to authorize the Fire Chief to execute the appropriate documentation with the National Purchasing Partners Fire Rescue GPO on behalf of the city relative to this purchase, which allows me to piggyback on their competitive bidding process, and so I can go off their process instead of having to do our own formal bid. And I know I covered a lot, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council or comments? I'm very pleased, I think we all are, that we actually have the ability to now purchase these and have an account that's, has been over the last couple of years able to be replenished, put money back into it to be able to purchase these. We do want to say thank you also for the period of time that you set aside to make sure that the budget in Yuba City was, remained balanced, or at least had some emergency funds set aside in case something did happen. Appreciate that. And then supporting the, the workers, the firemen with this new equipment is gonna be phenomenal for them to have the greatest working apparatus that I, I can imagine, so it's, it's great. Thank you. No other comment? Looking for action?
I would move staff's recommendation for the acquisition of this equipment.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have dual seconds, that's okay. I like that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, unanimous decision? Get them things here and in service.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to item number 18, solid waste recycling services competitive procurement City Manager, Steve Broger.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think, are the Fire Chief still here? So I think we're gonna have, when he eventually retires, I think we're gonna have a picture of Mr. Pete Daly up there, and I'm gonna be able to say, we got our money's worth out of him. But it's time to replace him, so.
Oh, no, no.
I said when that time comes, in the meantime, we're still getting our money's worth out of him, so we'll keep running him, all right?
Yeah. You're gonna leave here happy no matter what tonight, aren't you? And a couple new shiny red fire trucks, good for the community of Yuba City. So Mr. Member, members of the council, good evening. The matter before you this evening is the competitive procurement process for solid waste and recycling services. Earlier this year, your council considered a series of options for solid waste and recycling beyond the year of 2019, September of that year. Your council directed staff to proceed with a competitive procurement process. So since that time, staff has been working on a scope of services. We have done this in coordination with our other agencies in the area, recognizing that whether such a scope would be used for a competitive process or a negotiated process, it made sense that all of us get together and develop a good base document that could be established for the, the best practices in the industry. So with that document, staff is now recommending retaining the firm of Sloan-Vasquez-McAfee. Immediately in front of me, you will recognize Joe Sloan with that firm who's been before your council in the past. Their relationship with Sloan McAfee, pardon me, Sloan Vasquez-McAfee, does branch back to 2011. They've worked with us closely, and in fact, they were the firm that developed the scope of services as well. They've submitted a proposal, that proposal is included in your agenda packet for review and consideration. It does outline a timeframe for the finalization of that scope that would of course come back for final review by your council, the receipt of the proposals, and then proposal evaluation until early 2018. Of course, always happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time. I do expect that you have a fair amount of public input this evening, so if you'd prefer to wait till the end of that, that would be fine as well. I do have, I guess, one off-the-cuff request. I've been working for the community here for 17 years, been a happy citizen here for 23. I've always found that all of our discourse, when we sometimes agree to disagree, it's been civil, and that's one of the reasons why I like working for this community, and I just ask for that level of decorum this evening as we speak as a community on this matter. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will step away, unless you advise me otherwise. Please, go ahead and sit down, and if we have anything, we will request later. And at this moment, I am going to ask the council if they have any questions or comments directly related to the matter at hand here of having Mr. Sloan, or Sloan McAfee-Vasquez, I always flip them around, if they have any questions or comments on it right this moment. Now, the next comment is, we do know that there are comments based upon this item, while it's not directly on this item, we feel that it is proper to go ahead and let the public voice their thoughts on the whole process of the solid waste that we are looking at for the community, so I will be calling up the names, and you will have three minutes to express what you have to say, and then please sit down so that the next one can come up. I will call the first one, and then a second one that would be, as they say in baseball, on deck. So, it's a little bit scribbled there, but it's, I'll just say the name, Kevin? Kevin Speeser, okay. The P is one that confused me. Okay. And then on deck will be Mark Boomgarden.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I appreciate your time and consideration this evening. My name's Kevin Spees. I'm a resident businessman and Rotarian in the city of Elk Grove, I want to be clear about that. I want to make sure, or excuse me, I want, I know you have much to talk about tonight, and so I won't make this go long, I'll get straight to the point. I'm here to voice my support for entering negotiations with Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee to start the RFP process. The RFP process is in the best interest of any constituent. The competition among contractors can yield better prices and better services. In fact, there are a few stellar competitors out there that have terrific resident satisfaction and low practically nonexistent trouble calls. Also, extremely high levels of community involvement and programs that have good practices for local and global environment. In Elk Grove, our service provider is Republic Services. I consider myself to be an extremely active member in the community, and I can tell you that I see Republic Services at every event that I attend, and honestly, I'm at three to four events each week. They're actively part of our community fabric, their workers live with us, their leadership serves with us, from the Elk Grove Chamber, to the Rotary, to the Food Closet. They have been faithful service providers to our residents for many years. So, it's in the best interests of, I believe it's in the best interest of constituents to evaluate all possible options and negotiate for best value. Please support your staff recommendation to enter the agreement. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. After Mark Boomgarden, it would be John Cassidy.
Mark's not here. Oh, there he is.
I'm here. It's been a while since I've...
You were in the shadow.
Yeah. It's been a while since I've been at this podium. I want to assure Fire Chief Pete Daly that there is life after the fire service, so. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name's Mark Boomgarden. I am the President of Valley Truck and Tractor, which is located here in Yuba City, with 10 locations throughout the North State. I'm going to speak to you this, this evening, first as, on representing our company, but then as a citizen of Yuba City. Our, our operation, as I mentioned, spans 10 locations, two of them here in Yuba City, and the rest ranging from Elk Grove up to Chico and throughout the Northern Sacramento Valley. We are served by both Recology and other vendors for our waste management. We do also have agreements for special pickup, but those are the two that are, provide us with service. I want to make sure that you understand that as a commercial consumer, our rates are comparable, whether it's waste management, recology, et cetera. There's been some discussion about difference rates. I managed that aspect of our business for, for probably six years, and very happy with Recology. What isn't comparable is the service levels. Specifically, I'm not going to poor mouth any of the other vendors that we do business with, but I can certainly highlight the fact that Recology is there, they're local. When I pick up the phone, if I have a need at any of our Recology serviced locations, I get a local person who shows up or helps me and helps our business. They fast respond, and I would say that are, that they are our business partner, and that is highly valued in a business such as ours. I would also like to address the city as a resident of 38 years, former city employee for 30 years, and your fire, past Fire Chief. Pete does a great job for the 14 years. I have been and remain extremely happy with the services that Recology provided, not only as a citizen, but as a member of the Fire Department and city staff. There was never an instance where I needed help, either as an emergency agency or as a, as a citizen, where Recology wasn't present and, and quick to, to respond. Our citizens value that. It's, and I'm not saying that others can't provide that service, but I know for a fact, and I can speak to the fact, that Recology continually provides that. Hazmat response, they were one of the first people to raise their hand when we developed the 4th of July Kids Parade as well. I would admit that I am struggling to understand the option of spending $66,000 to $73,000 of taxpayer funds to pursue, pursue a bidding process managed by the same consulting firm that recommended attempting negotiations with the current provider, just first before going out to bid. As a former department head here in the city, I'm reasonably certain that the $50,000 to $60,000 of tax funds could be used in other ways to benefit our, our city. I respectfully request that you consider alternative, alternative three in support of going out, trying to figure a great negotiation with Recology, and if that doesn't work out, then you can go out and follow the bid process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after John Cassidy, we have Rick Jimmerson.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna interrupt.
Yes.
I just don't want people booing too, so you know, you can't, the hard thing is, we can't clap and we can't boo, and...
They were booing me, it's okay.
Well, I guess they were clapping you, Mr. Cassidy, I'll just go with that. But you're meeting, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanna, sometimes that, that can get out of hand, thank you.
Yes, please respect that and try to stay as neutral as possible.
I think they're a boomin' boomer.
I get it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, appreciate your time tonight, thanks for listening. Obviously, this is a big issue for this community. I'll move through my comments quickly. I'm John Cassidy, I live at 2057 Pheasant Drive, just on the north side of town here. I'm here as a homeowner, a rental owner, and I'm CEO of the largest financial institution that's headquartered here in Yuba City. Tonight, you're gonna hear from many community leaders who are asking you as a city council to revote, to negotiate directly first with Recology, which in the opinion of many people this evening, Recology has been a legacy organization of the highest order for 43 years in this community. For many here this evening, and most of them are Yuba City residents, you will hear again and again and again about Recology's commitment, involvement, and the investments they've already made in our community. Personally and professionally, I know that since I moved here in 1985, there is no other business, large or small, that has done more for this community in terms of giving dollars, which means something. Employee volunteer hours, use of equipment when needed, you just heard that from Mark, and cooked so many tremendous meals for so many community events and people in need, it's an extraordinary thing that they have done since I've been here in 1985. Over the past 33 years, I've worked shoulder to shoulder with the team at Recology, starting back with Ramos Cochi and Eck Group. We were there in the 1986 floods, they were there in the 1986 floods and '97, and they never stopped, and I was there with them, and we raised hundreds of thousands of dollars over a period of 33 years for flood opportunities that came along, and in '97, there was a lot of money that was built up over those years with the help of Recology to help people that never would've got that kind of help, because the money wasn't in this community to help them. Again, no other organization, since I've lived here in 1985, has done more for this community, period, and they don't have to. And that's the culture that they've established. Just as important, and you heard that from Mark, is their impeccable service reputation as a company and provider in Yuba Sutter. They've earned that reputation by picking up people's garbage on time, operating a state-of-the-art transfer station, and for being available when a need arises. I've never heard one complaint in all the times I've lived here since 1985 about Recology service, not one. That means something. It's obvious that all of you take your job seriously, or you wouldn't be sitting in those chairs. As I understand it from my research on this issue, Yuba City is going it alone or... As I understand it from my research on this issue, Yuba City is going it alone or attempting to potentially go it alone for its waste management services. First and foremost, knowing that the Austin Road landfill was the last landfill built in this state, and that was twenty-two years ago. That tells me that the permitting nightmare, dealing with the state of California, the Army Corps, and all you gotta do is look at the levees, the EPA, environmentalists, and wherever else wants to put up roadblocks, is a staggering and extremely costly challenge, looking at forty million dollars in today's dollars, potentially, much more down the road. Your own hired consultant, Sloan Vasquez, said Recology's rates were competitive.
You're gonna need to wrap it up.
Yeah, it's my understanding also that the city staff initially recommended that you negotiate first before you go to a bid. As a person who's lived here and operated a financial institution, I've been on committees throughout the state of California, and this is a huge undertaking that you're considering, and you're risking the long-term pain for this city. For me as a resident, the reasons not to negotiate in good faith with Yuba City or with Recology and the city of Yuba City do not exist. There's too many unknown variables. Recology has proven to be the best corporate citizen, the best corporate citizen this community has ever had since I've lived here, and they've earned the opportunity to, to negotiate in good faith. If that doesn't work out, you have the option to go to bid. Who in this room agrees with me? Stand up, stand up. Thank you.
This is the kind of display that has been asked not to be done, so John is not appreciated at all. You're out of line.
I don't think I'm out of line at all.
That's your opinion.
These guys have done more in this community than anybody.
John, John, stop it.
Don't caution me in public. Don't do it. You don't want to go there.
Yes, John, thank you. Council members. Mr. Jimmerson, one moment, please. Ron Roman is on deck.
Rick Jimmerson, I'm a resident of Yuba City, California, and I just have some things I'll go through here as quickly as possible. I know that time, we're trying not to be too redundant or replicate, so just quickly.
Thank you very much.
One thing I did want to note right away is that Grass Valley did go through a RFP a year ago and went through all the processes and had all the headaches, and at their last council meeting here, the winning entity has come in and asked for, to raise the rates. Nothing unusual about that, but just felt that we should all be aware that it's happens and happened real close. I have a few questions to the council, so may I, so I and we may have a better understanding of why you are taking certain actions. I see that the city spent one hundred and sixty-six thousand for a report including public forums and a study regarding fees and services to determine what action to take regarding contracts with our current waste provider. The recommendations to the council from the hired consultants were to negotiate with the current provider. The city staff made its recommendation to the council. They concur with the recommendations of Sloan, Vasquez, McAfee to negotiate with the current service provider and retain the option to conduct a competitive procurement process if negotiations prove to be unsuccessful. I understand, and many people here would like to know what it is that leads you to disregard the recommendations of a firm you paid one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and also why you would completely ignore the staff recommendations, which were at that time in agreement. So we don't know what it is that you know that they don't, even after you've spent the money. We know that we've got two hundred thousand dollars plus of staff employees who are working on it, and if they couldn't actually do it as a job, and you cannot agree with what it is they said, then I'm wondering, have you already started the process to replace them? There's no need to spend that type of money for employees that cannot provide the services that we expect from, and required by yourself. So why have you hired a firm, again, or wanting to, and you've got it on the, to trust things tonight? So I've originally brought this to your attention regarding the hidden fee that I refer to as a franchise fee. You've turned that into a reason to start an RFP. The city actually last year made more money off the contracts than the provider did. As a businessperson, that was my problem from the very beginning. It was all there, we showed it to you in the numbers, and we proved it. I have no relationship with Recology, any of their services or whatever. It's just simply I brought that up because if I was a businessperson and people were saying that I had raised my rates, when actually the city raised their rates, that's not correct. It's not a right way to run the business. So other positions have done many of their buying opportunities through RFPs, and there's a time and a place for them. But having been where I've been and through my career and what we've done, relationships are a place to start. And not to show the common courtesy of beginning a negotiation before calling for an RFP was a great oversight by this council. I don't appreciate it. I know you're wrong, I don't just think you're wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. After Ron, we will have Kevin Cotter.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to stand before you today. My name is Ron Roman. I'm the district rep for operating engineers, local number three, with an office right here in Yuba City. And I'm not going to ask anybody to stand up, but if you just look around the room, I think you can see it without anyone having to stand up. We represent approximately one hundred and ten people out there at Recology that work out there every day, okay? Approximately forty-two of those people live right here in the city. That's a pretty large percentage of the entire company that lives and works right here. Those dollars come home right here, they're spent right here, they're active in their communities, they participate. They're talking about culture earlier. I think you don't have to look very far to see the type of culture that Recology's bu- excuse, excuse me, built in this community. Everywhere you look, it's positive. I've never seen anything negative that was said earlier tonight. I have not heard of anything negative from the employees or the employers or the, the customers about this company. So I too, on behalf of all these yellow shirts in here and the seventy or eighty others that couldn't make it tonight because they're up at two o'clock in the morning to go out there and do this job, I strongly recommend and hope that you would go back and negotiate first with Recology, as everybody suggested, and then come back if it does not work out, and go off and, and do something different. But I would suggest and hope that today, that you do look at Recology first and then go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. After Kevin, it's Kelly Sheeran.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Kevin Cotter. I'm the co-founder of New Worth Market, and I have another commercial business here in town. I was born and I had the privilege of being born and raised in this community. I love this community. I'm going to tell you something, in my business, I am the biggest disruptor in my business. I've surrounded myself, however, in recent years with very good employees, professionals, and vendors that I trust to tell me when I'm wrong. So I'm asking the city council to listen to this community, to listen to the staff, to listen to the recommendation to negotiate. Recology has a transfer station in place, they have the landfill, neither one are at capacity. And again, I, I have no relation with Recology, except they do a very good job, and I can assure you, having a business in Chico as well known with waste management, Recology does very well for this community. I've learned not to push a rope in my business. That's been one thing that's come from surrounding myself with quality people. I don't want to be the salmon that swims upstream that ultimately dies because I had such a good idea that I thought was a good idea when no one else agreed with me, when I shouldn't have ever swam upstream in the first place. I would encourage this council to look through a different window. Look at this room, listen to your constituents. What's the harm in negotiating? Doesn't work out, go to bid. But what's the harm? Why do we want to send sixty-seven thousand dollars on a salmon that's going to go upstream and die anyway? That's my two cents, thanks.
After Kelly, we have Mike Leggins.
Good morning, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Kelly Sheeran, I'm a resident of Yuba City and part owner at Give a Key Ford. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the Give a Key family. To the Give a Key family, Recology is about community. It's about spaghetti dinners, pink toters, countless employee volunteer hours, and employee owners that live, eat, and shop in our community. The fact that they just pick up our garbage is the cherry on top for us. They provide an excellent service for a reasonable price. They deserve to make a profit. And speaking with fellow community members and leaders, there's no question that Recology should be the top prospect to continue our trash service. They're an integral, integral, integral part of our community. Please alter your position and renegotiate with Recology. Thank you.
Thank you. Then after Mike Leggins is going to be Jackie Selman.
Evening, Mike. Mayor Cleveland, Vice Mayor Dittball, and honorable council members, I'm Mike Leggins, general manager of Recology Yuba Sutter, and also a Yuba City resident. I'm here tonight representing the hundred and thirty-five employee owners of Recology Yuba Sutter. We, along with our predecessors, have provided service here for forty-two years. During that time, we have never once taken it for granted. Instead, we've been excellent corp, corporate partners, we've provided high-quality and innovative services, and that's been verified by third-party studies over the last three or four years. We respect and appreciate the partnership with the city of Yuba City, and we would like to see it continue well into the future. I'm here not to stop the process to go out to RFP. I'm simply here tonight just to ask that the RFP not be the first action choice. I ask tonight that you vote for the alternative provided in your staff report to, to select the alternate of your previous, to alter the previous direction and conduct negotiations with us, Recology. Now, over a couple other points, and this will be quick, there's been mention about the transfer station where it's located. Our existing Marysville Transfer Station facility is not in jeopardy and has twenty-plus years of useful life remaining. And you, and you know now, there's really no easy place to put a transfer station in Yuba City or Sutter County. The site, the, the new transfer station, and even if there was one, the environmental process and community concern make it difficult. I know you've, I won't go into the process that, that you've, that's led you here, but I respectfully request you to consider the alternate provided in your staff report to alter your previous direction and start negotiations with Recology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. After Jackie is John Morrison.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, Vice Mayor Dittball, and honorable council members. My name is Jackie Selman. My husband and I have been Yuba City residents for thirty-five years, and I live at nineteen sixty-four Cherry Street in Yuba City. We also own the upholstery hut on five sixteen Second Street for about forty years, and I've been the community outreach manager for Recology Yuba Sutter for the past seventeen years. So I'm here tonight as a resident, a business owner, and on behalf of myself and a hundred and thirty-five employee owners. So cities and counties primarily do go out to bid because they're unsatisfied with the service or the cost. And I have attended those nine council, board, and community public meetings throughout the region that were provided by consultants Sloan Vasquez and McAfee, who were hired by the Regional Waste Management Authority, and I can tell you I didn't hear one complaint from the residents on either service or price. So the employee owners of Yuba Sutter, I feel, have earned the right to at least negotiate first for services. We've built in the forty-plus years many, many partnerships, and I see some here tonight, and our, we cherish our partnership with the city of Yuba City. I live here, I raised my son here, I work here. We all, as employee owners, give back many hours, not because we have to, because we want to. So please reconsider, go to alternative number three on your staff report, and conduct negotiations with Recology Yuba Sutter, and we hope and look forward to an ongoing positive partnership for many years to come. Thank you.
After John Morrison, it's Rory Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. This is my first time here, this is a great process, I'm kind of excited about this. I've done some voting and some campaigning, but I've never been part of this, this is great. I'm going to go a little softer and touchier than my buddy John Cassidy did tonight. I think we'll have a bottle of wine next time we come here, right before, calm down. I am going to kind of hit on the touchy-feely side, I'm looking out here at the men and women in yellow, and these people, employee owners, have done a great job in safety in our community. So there is the cost and every, all the little things that have been talked about tonight, but one of the things we've not talked about is the safety that these men and women provide us. I'm very concerned about that, you know, being here for five generations in Sutter County, been around here for awhile. So I want to consider that at all times, too. They've done a wonderful job over in Marysville, keeping everything contained. Love these guys, and I want to finish up with shop local, and this is local. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rory. And after that, and not sure if, it looks like Mark Mulliner.
Good evening, excuse me, Mayor Cleveland.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dittball, and fellow council members. My name is Rory Ramirez. I reside at sixteen fifty-seven Greenwood Way, excuse my voice, Yuba City, California, and I am going to ask everyone to please, at the end of my comments, no standing ovations, I don't want to cause any issues for the mayor or anyone else in the audience. Standing here with me is former Mayor Bob Barkhouse, and former Mayor Karen Cardiselli was supposed to be with us here as well, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the three of us. Really, everything has been said that needs to be said in terms of options that this council has. What I want to touch on a little bit is discretionary authority and the process that you use, and how and when you use that discretionary authority. This particular item allows you to do that. And so while for me, it's a struggle to see why, when you look at all of the vetted data that we have all paid a lot of money for, six jurisdictions in this region have paid for experts to tell us, to tell our electives whether or not we are getting a fair deal, we are getting quality service, you've heard all of the comments related to that. So for the purpose of my points, I'm going to, and under the background on staff report, they talk about options one and two, which is to extend the term of the current agreement with Recology or renegotiate the existing agreement with Recology. I'm going to combine that into one option, because they're not mutually exclusive. If you decide to take advantage of the opportunity tonight and go to alternative three, and first enter into negotiations with Recology, you've got option one, which if you choose that, does not take any other options off the table. All other options going out for an RFP process are still in play. But if you stay the course you're on, and you stay with option two, going out for RFPs, you eliminate the options within number one. Now, you've set a precedent to this, interestingly enough, in that you have the ability and you have the will to do it. You did it tonight. You had on the consent calendar, item number fourteen, renewal of contract. Recommendation, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an updated agreement with ICMA-RC to administer the city's four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan. If you read staff's report on that item and their recommendation, it has all of the elements of what you were talking about here. It was a sole source agreement, it was an updated contract, it involves millions of dollars in terms of retirees' money, plus the same firm handles medical for you as well under a separate contract. So it's not like, and no one on the council, when this item was brought up under the consent calendar, no one spoke up, no one from the public spoke up, there was no discussion on a process that we are asking you to consider when it comes to your current service provider for solid waste management. That's the end of my comments. Take any questions, or Mayor, anything you want to say, please.
No, I just want to say, if it ain't broke, don't replace it, and don't try to repair it.
A man of few words right there, Mayor Barkhouse. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, after, I guess it is Mark, it almost looks like Mac, but it looks like Mark, and Bill Lloyd.
I'm a welder, not a speller.
Well, it's, it's better, it's better printing than mine, I'll give you that.
My name is Mark Mulliner, I'm business manager-
My name is Mark Mulliner, I'm Business Manager, plumbers and pipe fitters, Local 228, Yuba City. I'm here, it's an honor to be here speaking with you council members and council. I have to say that it's disappointing to be here in this capacity. I would much rather be here under different capacity. Understanding that you have an opportunity to put something out to bid is because you're dissatisfied with what you had. If you were dissatisfied, if your constituents are dissatisfied, if you have complaints, if there's, if there's multiple issues with costs, if the third-party consultant said that they're within the margins of error, then sit down and negotiate with them, they've earned it. This is their community, they live here, they pay good wages, they're a union contractor, their people are going to retire and not be a burden on society. This is, everything is lined up here with this company and Recology and its employees that if you want to go out to bid to get the best deal, the best deal's not always the cheapest deal. Over here at the courthouse, contractor RNS went out of business, they were the low bidder on the job. Out of business, bankrupt. They weren't the best company to do the job. And here we have an opportunity. We know that Recology, and I don't represent Recology, I'm an ally, I represent workers and union members. And I can tell you that if you haven't sat down to at least discuss and negotiate what might be a better deal before going out to the unknown, the unknown person or contractor, I don't know the company, I don't know them from Adam, but I don't know that they're going to do what the company you have does, if they're going to do the things for the community, the things for everyone that lives here. And all I can say is, is why would you want to change horses in the middle of the race? Why would you want to just stop if the horse is still breathing and pulling the cart? Why do you want to change it out? You know? And if it ain't broke, he stole my line. Don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. After Bill Lloyd, it's Lisa Avila. Or Avila, however you want to.
Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. I just want to say that as a private citizen, I think that competition brings out the best in all businesses. And I think this is a chance to see what's out there. What else is, will we have the options that we have? So I'm in the support of the proposition tonight to retain the Vasquez Sloans, I'm sorry, Sloan Vasquez McAfee for the RFP and that we move forward and see what exactly is out there that we have that is the options. Thank you.
Thank you. After Lisa, we have Dave Vaughn. There were so many that were after you, I couldn't, I couldn't hold it. Sorry, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. Over the past several months, we've spent a lot of time in this community, getting to know the people and getting to know the organizations who make up this community. And I can tell you that I really appreciate the passion in this room. And that's because in the cities that we service, our customers and employees feel the same way. We've made friends and we've gained a better understanding of what this community wants and needs and how we can benefit it. We're very involved in the communities that we service, supporting their events and their nonprofit organizations, and engaging in boards and committees where we can share our management expertise. We offer services that go above and beyond the services, the normal services that you would expect from a provider. We partner with community leaders to support the direction and goals of the city. We would like the opportunity to propose a program for Yuba City to benefit the city and its ratepayers. It's for these reasons that we ask that you agree to enter into a consulting agreement with Sloan Vasquez, Sloan Vasquez and McAfee, I'm sorry, you guys.
Me, too.
To produce and manage a fair RFP for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. After Dave Vaughn, we have Scott Kuhn.
Joe, how many times is your name going to be messed up tonight?
I'm sorry. Well, I don't know. You don't need it, we just have trouble with it.
Hey, Joe, SVM.
It's all, it's all us.
Good evening, Members, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Dave Vaughn. My family and I live at 732 East Hillcrest Avenue. I'm proud to be an employee-owner of Recology and I also serve as the company's Vice President and Senior Director of Operations. I stand here tonight on behalf of the employee owners to thank you for the opportunity to provide services in the city of Yuba City and Yuba Sutter area. We're very proud of the services we provide, we're very proud of the impact that we have in our community partnership, and we thank you for that opportunity. I'm going to be sweet, short and sweet tonight. I ask that council approve alternate three in the staff report to enter into sole source negotiations with Recology. For the record, Recology stands ready, willing, and able to enter into good negotiations promptly. I'm happy to answer any questions and happy to come back if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. After Scott, Jonice Downs.
Mayor Cleveland and other Members of the Council and also this August, most August group here, my name is Scott Kuhn from Recycling Industries. And I've been in business in this community and I'm not going to tell you how long. There's been a lot of talk about age and how long they've lived here and been here, so we won't get into that because I need to be as brief as possible. First of all, I want to thank the council for the wisdom and the consideration that you went through before you made your decision to put this out to bid and to ultimately negotiate with the consultant for the RFP. Bringing to mind just a few things that are going to result of this decision that you've made is that, first of all, since I was a teenager, and that's been a while, you're going to have the opportunity through the, through the transfer station that we're putting in here, you're going to have all, all the residents in this area are going to have the opportunity to self-haul what waste they have and not have to drive 20 to 25 miles practically to haul wood to do it. You're also going to find, although it's been objected to, you're going to find that the citizens of Yuba City and Yuba City in this area are going to have much lower rates than what they have to pay at the present time. We already did a study on that. The second of, second of all, you're going to find that because of this transfer station, that the city will now receive host fees, which they have not received for many years because the host fees have all gone to Marysville because that's where the garbage is dumped. We estimate through this transfer station that we put in, those host fees will be around $300,000 a year at this particular point. We've seen the costs for, for various pieces of equipment that was needed and that $300,000 each year will go towards paying things like that. One of the final things is that the time, it's time for this. It's already been mentioned by one young man here that competitive bidding is the way things are done. We're rebuilding this bridge from Yuba City to Marysville, that was competitive bidding. Virtually everything we do in the city is competitive bidding. It's the best way to get the best price. And the time is right for us to do that because this is the first time in over 40 years this contract will be put out to competitive bidding. A lot has been said about Recology and the great job they're doing, that they're doing. And I have nothing against Recology. I think you probably have done a good job in all of that. And the beauty of this whole thing is that now, Recology will have the opportunity to bid on this contract just like everyone else and see where they stand. Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely, thank you. After Jonice, it's Tony Sinca. I think I have that right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of the Council. My name is Jonice Downs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am with Republic Services. And Republic Services is one of the largest waste and recycling companies in the nation. We've been recognized nationally for our waste and recycle programs and over 13 million customers across the state and across the country rely on Republic Services. But that's us in a big global picture. Who we are and what really tells our stories, our story is who we are in our communities that we serve. We provide exclusive residential service for Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Elk Grove. And in those communities, we're engaged in Rotary, all kinds of local organizations, and we get involved. We spent upwards of $500,000 in services and sponsorships and community support just last year. And while that's a big number, what's even bigger is what we actually do in our communities. We're in our communities hands-on. And in fact, I gave a report that over a six-week period, we had volunteered, been engaged in, and supported in-person, hands-on, over 60 events in like a six-week period, which I still don't know how we did that. But that's who we are as a company, that's how we get involved in our communities. So when you look at impeccable service, we provide that. If you look at engagement and involvement in our communities, we're there. Monetary support, we give monetarily and in-person and physical. So I think this is a tremendous opportunity for the city council right now to look at, you know, what options you have before us, before you. And we support and really encourage you to move forward with the RFP process. So I respectfully ask you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, you're carrying the tail.
Good evening, Mayor and Yuba City Council Members. I'm Tony Sinca, General Manager with Republic Services. You know, I see a lot of great employees in the room tonight and I just want to point out that, you know, y'all sound like you do a great job here. And we would look to, you know, if we were to bid on the contract and get it, we would look to keep the same workforce as there is now, right? I mean, y'all are the experts. You know, I could tell by all the positive comments tonight that you do a great job. But with that being said, you know, we also do a great job. We service, we have multiple franchise agreements in Northern California. Out of Sacramento, we run, we have franchise agreements at Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove. And I could tell you, a lot of the comments here tonight are similar to the comments that we receive in our cities. Also in looking at, you know, our franchise agreements in comparison to some of the services you all get, I think this could be an opportunity for us to, to give you a proposal and, you know, offer some expanded services on top of some of the great things you have right now. So, you know, I just ask that you, you continue the, the process and I humbly request that we, we be part of it. So, thank you very much and good night.
Okay, now with that, I do have three letters that we did receive, two of them from actually out of the area that are council members of, one of them of Rancho Cordova, in support of going out to bid. Then also another council member from Elk Grove, and then also Members of Yuba City that have sent a letter saying that they would like us to continue and go into a negotiation. So these are three letters that are going into the record, has been received. Now with that, first of all, I would like ask our city manager if there are any clarifications that need to be brought forth with some inaccuracies, if there are any, or just some clarifications that you would prefer to respond to. Normally, we don't, but.
Mr. Mayor, if there's anything of your council that jumped out as you? I mean, there's a lot said over the course, a lot of public testimony.
For me, it's mostly the number and the dollar value that keeps being tossed out that we, as Yuba City, spent.
Well, a couple things. One is the proposal is roughly $66,000, $67,000. That, specific to that number, that can be included and is part of the proposal to be covered, that cost covered by the successful proposer, so that's that issue. The other is the number that I don't know the exact certain number, but I have written down $166,000 that was spent by the Regional Waste Management Authority, of which we are a member. And that was the initial study.
A shared cost.
Cost with the other jurisdictions, with the other six jurisdictions. That is one, the study that was done for the analysis, the initial analysis to come forward with the recommendation. And these, these are recommendations of staff and I, I don't expect you'll always agree with me. I expect, hopefully, the majority of the time you will, otherwise you need to replace me. And that was the one where the council decided to go to the negotiation, pardon me, bypass the negotiations and go to the competitive bidding process. I do not have the information before me to refute that number. Keith Martin, rather, as the exec for the Regional Waste Management Authority controlled that process.
What would be the estimated cost of a negotiated process we would have put out no matter what through this whole thing?
Well, I, I could certainly ask Mr. Sloan for that number. The, you have, the city of Yuba City is a, at least $10 million of the contract, the current contract total. So you need to look at your council and what philosophically the direction you head in. What I don't want you to do is get too hung up on the dollar amount because on a $10 million contract hypothetically, if you could save 1%, that's $100,000. So it begins to proportionally dwarf the dollar amounts. Are you willing to make a certain dollar investment in order to save money on the back end? So whether it be, I would expect it would be less for a negotiation process, okay? But it's, it's ultimately the goal of your council and the outcome you desire that should be driving that, not the investment upfront.
The, the dollar amount was the number one thing that actually stood out to me as, just kind of wondering where, whether it was us, as it was said, or as a group, the split up and the sharing of that.
And I'll clarify based on that comment, one other thing. I mean, it was a comment from my fellow administrators, quite frankly, that your council decided to go one, one direction, five other jurisdictions went in another. You reserve that right to make that decision on behalf of Yuba City. It could have been 3-3, it could have been 4-2, it could have been any mix of numbers in there. Your council was one of the first decision-makers in what direction to go in? You weren't the last? So it wasn't as if five went in one direction, then you went in a different direction? So given the fact you're on the front end, it's, you can frame it because that was the outcome that you're going in alone, but it wasn't one of the objectives of the council when you, when you stated that. So just want to remind that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, I would expect that there may be some questions for clarification that may come up in the conversation that we are going to have now amongst ourselves in public.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any, I see a light on right down there. Councilman Harris, your light's on, you have some comments? That's usually how I go by it, is by watching the lights go on.
It is on. I'll remember that.
I go by the lights, that's all I can do.
I can start by, I guess, comment. Do we, would it be appropriate to continue the vote on the $66,000 first and then move forward? Because on the, what I'm commenting on is not necessarily about the $66,000 we're going to spend.
Tradit, pardon me. Traditionally, your council has, has taken this opportunity to ask any questions you have regarding any of the subject matters, germane to the staff report.
Okay, well, I have no questions. I do have a few things to say when ever appropriate. Go ahead, all right. All right. I'm not stalling, I'm just trying to be proper here. We've heard a lot of folks talk, and forgive me, I can't see very well past the first row, sure there's a lot of people out there, I know, but. A lot of talk today, I see a lot of yellow out there. I don't think it's, it's kind of a little bit deja vu because we're going, we, no secret, we voted the first time. After talking to a lot of people, a lot of people, since that vote was made. And then today, looking into your eyes, hearing people speak from the heart, getting a little drama. Don't worry, John, the Oscar's in the mail. It's a passion issue and I understand that. I completely understand that, we, we understand that. It's inflammatory, it's a big deal, it's a lot of money, it's people's careers and livelihood. But I think, especially after today, we've heard from a lot of people, from all parts of our community, prominent people, educated people, knowledgeable people, people around... around for, for decades and decades. And, um, I remain of the opinion that, uh, we have a known entity who has done a good job, whatever that entity may be. It's not about a specific company name, it's the way I look at it, I kind of zoom out a little bit, try to get away from all the emotion. And, um, look at it, kind of a business thing, we have sixty-six thousand dollars, some may possibly even a little north of that, that we're going to spend. Do we really need to leapfrog beyond the option of negotiating, right? And eliminated all those, someone mentioned eliminating all those other options, just in principle. We have a known entity, they're doing a good job, we're happy with them. It just makes good business sense to give them a shot, see if it works out, and then move on. If it doesn't, we still have the opportunity to go out to bid. It's my opinion. That's it. I could go on, but, you know, I, I won't. I'm turning my light off now.
So, uh, Manny, do you have any comments you want to make?
It's going to be short and sweet. Um, I totally, uh, agree with what Councilman Harris just said. Uh, I've lived here for sixty years, uh, in the community, worked for several businesses. Uh, Recology does wonderful work, their community, one of the top community leaders. Uh, like, we've said several times, if it's broken, you know, we don't need to, uh, we don't need to fix it, so, huh? If it's not broken, excuse me, yeah, if it's broken, yeah. Get it right, yeah, if it's not broken. If it's broken, yes. But anyway, uh, yeah, so you know how I...
I'm getting used to this.
Yes, I am.
And it is, it actually is tough, just try it sometime.
Yeah. So anyway, uh, I totally agree with, uh, Councilman Harris, so, uh, we'll just see what happens here in the close future. Thank you.
Now, I don't know who to throw the coin up between the two here because, um, I'll go with John. In honor of the vice mayor position.
I would have expected you to do that.
I, and I considered that. I, I have actually learned something.
Something, right?
Recology is a remarkable, uh, service provider in our area. That's not what is at question. The employee's integrity is not at question. Um, the level of service, the type of service, um, is certainly not part of what the conversation is tonight. I've heard a lot of comments from the public, uh, from the past and tonight, that really haven't changed tremendously, um, over the course of time. One of the big questions is, if they're doing a great job, why go out to bid? Uh, there was a comment tonight, and, and I try to write these down as, as best I can so I can respond to them, but, um, is going it alone a benefit to the city? Well, you heard when the city made their decision, uh, to go it alone, wasn't on the tail end of, of a decision. We, uh, have been negotiating and, and have had contracts with Recology for, uh, well, since the beginning of Recology, back to NorCal, back to all of the other names, um, that have preceded Recology in this business. One thing that has been absent is a competitive bid. At no time has this ever gone out to a public process and a competitive bid. Joe Sloan came to us just months ago with a recommendation, and, and Mr. Jemison, you were quite correct. He said something along the lines, we ought to go through, just negotiating with him, if that doesn't work out, uh, let's go out to a bid, and he actually chastised the council for a decision that they made. But I throw back at Joe Sloan, the very same comment that he made in front of this council, not the same, uh, individuals here, in two thousand and eleven, that the way to get the best services and the best prices was to go to competitive bid, and they will sharpen their pencils. He said that. I took him at his word. I believe that that is the process that the public expects of their government, or a representative body of government, to protect ratepayers in the future. When we buy a car for the city of Yuba City, we go to a competitive bid process. We even edge our bids here by one percent. The city's sa- uh, take on sales tax to try to keep that bid local. The majority of the vehicles that we purchase are now local bids because of the, of the position that this council's taken in the past to edge those bids. If we didn't go out to bid, we could select any truck we wanted, what's good for us? It's not broke, don't fix it. Well, what kind of vehicle's going to service the best? Is it going to be a Ford? Is it going to be a Chevy? Is it going to be a Dodge? Am I going to get it from Sacramento, Roseville, Woodland, Calusa? Or am I going to try to get it right here in Yuba City? Compete- the competitive bid process, let me give you one of our recent examples. We went out to bid, six bidders came back on a major project. The estim- the engineer's estimate to build this project in Yuba City was fifty-five million dollars. Fifty-five million dollars. Competitive bid process, all bridge builders. Every one of them are professional bridge builders. The bid spread was forty million dollars. That should be shocking to everybody in this room. It shocked me. The low bidder was pushed out by the second bid, which was six or seven million dollars more than the low bid. Was pushed out because of irregularities. We're back out to bid, folks, and we're doing that for this community. We are not going to spend or expect our citizens or our ratepayers to spend money they don't have to for services. It's not apples and oranges all the time. In waste management, it can be. That's why an RFP is the most productive process to be able to develop exactly what the service is. I would expect the hometown team to prevail. They have the home-court advantage, they're playing on their football field, they know their hoop, the bend on the, on the rim, whatever you want to call it. They know the game here. They ought to build to be the successful bidder. But when I hear, "They may not bid," that the hometown team may not bid because that's what they did in Vacaville, then I look at the rates in Vacaville. A three-yard container for commercial is three hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-one cents for a one-time-per-week pickup. The newest contract in Chico, California, for a three-yard container, one-week pickup, is a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and three cents. The same company has those contracts. Does a competitive bid process work? Did in Chico. It did in Chico. Going to my other page of notes. Some of them are kind of redundant, so I'm not going to go through all of that. I think a lot of the answers were, were made, the, the, uh, money going over to Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee, um, that can be rolled into, into an RFP down the road, can be into an agreement. It's not wasted money. It's money for the ratepayers. That's the individuals that I'm the most concerned about. If we went to a process, as many have advocated, to going to option number three, that's going behind closed doors, folks, keeping it away from the public, and coming to an agreement. Who wants government going behind doors to come up with prices in an agreement that will carry on for years to come? I say level the playing field. The playing field needs to be brought to that, to the, to the home team, the visitors can come in, let's see what happens. But I also believe the words of Joe Sloan from the past, the other Joe Sloan from twenty-eleven, they'll sharpen their pencil, okay? We will have an agreement that will be better, that'll be better suited for this community, and it won't have some ongoing aggravations that I've even had discussions, uh, with some of the management teams, um, in the past.
You're done.
I'm done.
Turn your light off. There you go. No, I know his, I know his brain, it's still going like crazy, but he decided that that was it. Um, Vice Mayor?
Okay. First of all, I just want to say that Recology is an amazing, amazing business here, amazing community partners. I have nothing negative to say about Recology, but I strongly do believe in competitive bidding. I've been with the state for almost twenty years, I was a contract manager for many years, and there's not anything that we did within the state that wasn't competitive bid. So going back on, on some of the takes that John's already taken, I won't repeat them, but, I'm just as far as competitive, yeah, I got my notes too. Um, competitive bidding provides any good or service companies to submit that bid, you all know that. And this provides transparency, that was one of the takes that he was saying at the end. It is complete transparency to the community of what is happening, what is going on, what are the discussions. It's an open discussion. Any of the other events that take place are behind closed doors. And our community, our ratepayers deserve that open transparency, understanding what's happening, what is the conversation, and where, where we're taking this. Um, one of the other things with competitive bidding, it introduces new suppliers that we may not be aware of. We've been in contract with Recology for over forty years. Great service, but you know what? Over forty years, lots of things change. Way work is done changes. If we are continuously working with the same company, and there are other suppliers out there that can provide us the same service or enhanced service that we don't know about, how can we say that we did our due diligence to really seek out the best? And that, and that's our job, that, that's what we're here for. We're here to serve the community, and my, my dedication is to the community and to make sure that I am doing everything that I can, along with the rest of the city council, that we're doing our job to provide the best. And if I don't have all the information in front of me, I can't make that decision. So without that competitive bidding, I don't know what I'm looking at other than one supplier, The potential of reducing contract costs or the increase of the scope of work can also be offered through competitive bidding. Competitive bidding is a legitimate and effective way to obtain services at a lower cost or a, or a enhanced way of service as well, by stimulating competition. We all know what that is. How many of us go, you know, um, purchase a home? How many homes do we look at before we make a decision? Cars, um, refrigerators, you name it, everything, we look at different options before we make that final purchase. And that's what we need to look at when we look at, um, our services within the community. And I believe in competitive bidding. I think we need to go, move forward in that direction and, and hopefully we'll, we'll see what comes up.
First of all, I would like to thank, uh, the supporters of, uh, both sides that have arrived here tonight. This is our American process. This is what is so fantastic about America, where we can get together without, um, uh, throwing things at each other, uh, throwing chairs and getting in fistfights and stuff, hopefully. If you've seen on the news, uh, sometimes in Japan and sometimes in cities in Europe, they're actually, in China, man, they're fisticuffs, I mean, they're going at it.
Sacramento?
Oh, okay. But, uh, that's common there in other countries, and, um, it's, it's great that we have a community here that is actually, uh, very civil, um, and I'm very pleased with the participation tonight from, from everyone. First of all, I would like to make note for people that, man, I'm getting, uh, dry.
Mayor, if I could, before you started, is anyone from the public afforded the opportunity to respond to any of the comments that have been made by the council members, if they are relevant and short?
Oh, that's my decision. I don't think so this time. It all has been said, thank you. I very, very strongly considered it. Okay. Um, one of the, one of the items that I would really like to point out is if you had read the agenda item, you would see how the RFP or the, uh, bidding is going to be weighted and designed, um, for, for, uh, evaluation categories. Uh, experience references, twenty percent, customer service, twenty percent, programs and services, twenty-five percent, price proposal, twenty-five percent. It's not about price as much as it is everything else. It also has responsiveness to RFP pass or fail. So also, legal and regulatory disclosures, all those things would be noted, financial information and requirements, materiality of, uh, exceptions to draft agreement and options, all noted. It's not all about price, as some people have tried to, um, uh, make it sound. It's very weighted towards all of the customer service side and the community. So it is not, just want to make that clear, that it's, it's not about, totally about the price. Um, I received virtually no communication once our policy was decided of the way to go from, um, our current provider. There was little. I did reach out once to, uh, in a phone call, and said, "If you have any comments and want to meet with me or whatever," I did that one time, I got no response, and this is a few months ago. So I just, okay, it's up to them to decide to come, call and talk to me. Um, until about three weeks ago, uh, the official, um, found out that, uh, was going to be pushed by a member of the community, was going to be pushing hard on, uh, on this item, um, which is actually the one that gave me the most information that actually supports my position. So that's kind of odd. Um, only, the only other real questioning on the RFP process or the bid, uh, competitive bidding open, I'm going to call transparent, um, was from an elected from another city who tried to ridicule me and bully me and berate me. You don't do that to another elected, okay? Um, they thought that I was the ringleader, uh, of this whole thing, and anybody that actually knows me, I'm the first one that is going to say, "Let's look at all the sides and make the decision with the most balanced." I drive myself crazy trying to sometimes find the right position and, and almost overlook things. Uh, because of past experiences in my life, I found that it may be hard on me, but it's the best for the community to do that. So, um, that official makes decisions for their community, they do not make decisions for my community. And so, um, there were two or three others that, um, uh, did not have defined... There were two or three others that um, uh, did not have defined um. Opposition to the process. They just didn't understand what was being said in the community of the difference between a. Negotiations and in our um, or a bidding, open bidding process and competitive. Once uh, the discussion and description was given, um, I just said. You make up your mind. I mean, which you would want. I left it completely in their lap. Didn't try to push them in any direction on that. I won't say that comment. There was um, some raised by uh, previous uh. Mayors. Thank you for being here and being interested still in our community. Um, the decisions you made. Um, I could look back and advise. Uh, Mayor Barkhouse uh, for the past. Uh, Mr. Ramirez has, I guess, left. Uh, wasn't happy with my uh, decision. Um. I must say that. You two did not have the opportunity to have. A. Large competitive responsible company that was interested in our community and our economy to scale. We're now of a size with their interested. And so I can't say as to whether you would have. Gone any of the directions based upon what, if you were in there that, you know, where would you have gone? I don't know. I have to go with what I have and this is the. A very responsible company nationwide. Um, and very competitive. In fact, they compete all over the state of California with all the different providers of services, including um, Half Moon Bay. Where um, our current provider actually took the opposite side of the story. And they wanted the RFP process. And Half Moon Bay did not. And uh. Recology prevailed, went to a uh, uh. Competitive process and um. Um. Republic prevailed. They were in the driver's seat and they prevailed. Even into that process. So it comes from both sides. It all depends on who wants to come in and who wants to uh, try to compete. It's, it's the industry. It's the industry norm to compete against each other. And so um, it happens all the time. Yes, we do have discretion. On franchise types of businesses. This is a franchise. One of the reasons that was given. Is because in some communities, there is no, there are no competitive companies. There's one that shows up. And according to state law. If it's over a certain amount, you're supposed to have a competitive process. So you turn it into a franchise, you turn it into a special service. And then they're permitted to go single source. And do contracts with them. That is one of the purposes of that. So one size does not fit all. And when your size gets to a certain size that you move into a, a whole new basket. Uh, the world changes. State of California has requirements on, on, on cities. When you, a city or Sutter County reaches 100,000, whole bunch of laws change. And we have to operate our government in a different manner, that threshold when it hits. Um, and there's many other things that are designed that way within the state of California. So it isn't one size fits all, one direction. And uh, so when conditions change. You have to go back and reconsider the direction you're headed and why. That's. Eight years at the county. Um, working with state issues and federal issues. Um, and dealing and talking with some. People that are much smarter than me. I've tried to take and glean what they have told me. And put it together in the best picture that I could and I operate with their knowledge and hopefully I can um, apply it properly. So there is some discretion and that's under special conditions that usually that is taken. Uh, and then we have to decide when that is to be done. As a team.
Mr. Mayor?
With all due respect, I don't mean to interrupt your, your, uh, your discussion.
If I am incorrect on something, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not here to correct that. I'm here to send the Recology drivers home. They have an hour rest period required. They start early. So they've been very patient. I asked them to stay till 7:15. They've stayed till 8 o'clock. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, from Recology, thank you guys so much for being here. We'll update you guys on the.
Or government regulation and it's a good reason for that, so.
Federal regulation.
Oh, that's the federal one? Okay.
Thank you.
It's government. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys. Drive safe.
Good job, man.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, you bet. Now, all I have is one more. I guess I'm going to be redundant upon with the two here on, on some things here, on this last comment. Uh, I went back and I tried to reconcile my. Uh, my understanding of the processes of negotiation and going out to uh, open uh, bid. And just go back over again. In fact, today I did it again and wrote down uh, as I see those two processes. Uh, negotiation avoids community involvement and open dialogue with the unelecteds. And electeds making policy and decisions on spending taxpayers' money. That's a little. A little bit um, loose on that, but it's. It's just a abbreviation. The benefits of that. Are as there's no politics. No controversy. Easy on government staff. Administration. It's easy on the uh, general community. And they are uninformed and basically everything's kept quiet. I understand that. And that was one of the comments that was made uh, during uh, by. I won't say it that way. Comments made during the policy decision meeting early in the year is that um. If we didn't go with the negotiation, uh, it would avoid um, um. Friction and strife in the community and that was one of the reasons that was given to negotiate. Sorry, that's not legitimate. That is not a legitimate reason for us to uh, to not go to negotiate. For us to turn tail and go, whadda, I don't want to get controversy. I wouldn't be in this position. Actually, I'd rather be a private citizen and not even be, have done this in my life. But I felt it was important when I saw the leadership. Doing what I am saying, I can't do. Um. And then uh, with the bidding process, it's a completely open and transparent process. Where the citizens can get involved with the process of where, how their tax money is spent. It can be very political. It could be much more controversial, difficult for staff and administration. Could be a lot of noise by. Well-informed citizen, a, a lot of noise, excuse me. And then it is uh, also by well-informed citizens and general public can be also a lot of noise on both sides of the story. Um. I personally believe that. The prior comment based upon it's a quite, much quieter process. Is one of the reasons that the staff of other agencies did not want to go uh, with a um. Competitive bid. It's easier on them. They have tough times. They don't have the staff. I hear that all the time. Don't bring anything before me that's going to give me more work or whatever like that. I used to get that all the time at the county. Um, not much here because I ignore that comment. Um, I just say it's necessary at least to look into it and if you give me the, you know, information that satisfies it, fine, I'll. I'll forego, but. Um, yeah, that's taking a little swipe out there, but. That's inherent in government. They want to have an easier life overall. And it's up to the. Policymakers to decide whether um, that is a valid. Concern by their part or the overriding concern for the taxpayers and their spending of their money overrides. Um, that concern of theirs. Um. We have a viable company that wants to come in. They have been very strong and vocal that want to compete. We cannot deny that. That's just wrong. If it was a small company or somebody that had no. Business being in competition like that couldn't fulfill it. I would say, no, let's go to negotiations like I did at the county. Did that twice. There was nobody there. We said, let's negotiate. It's a different time now and I think we need to move forward with um, moving with the um, recommended uh, agenda item. With that, I'm finished. Um, now I'd like to bring it back to. The council, get back uh, on course with the actual agenda item as um. Uh, presented. And if there's any uh, concerns or comments on the actual agenda item itself, the costs. Or um. Timing where that they would like to, with their uh, timeline that they have. Uh, please uh, bring them up now. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, um. Like to, I need to make a motion. And I think I would ask that we continue this momentarily on this agenda item. The vote on this.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion as to uh. On that item?
On that, what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, is make a motion, um. Excuse me, my laptop.
You already have, you already have a motion.
I'm going, what I'm going to do.
Are you going to be more specific?
My motion is to continue this agenda item on, on the vote for the 66,000. Momentarily.
Um, that is your motion?
Manny seconded.
Manny seconded. Okay, I'm going to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Wait a minute. What is he trying to?
Well, that's why I'd like to know why we're delaying.
Why are we delaying? Yes. You have to have a.
We, this is going to, this agenda item number 18 is going to be closed as soon as we're, we're about to vote, is that correct?
Right, but you have to have a reason why to postpone it or.
Make a. To make a.
To have staff go back and. What?
My goal here. My goal here is to move, make a motion that we go with alternative number three.
Okay, that is your motion.
That's my goal.
That is the, that is the real, uh, the real motion.
Privacy sake.
Okay, that's the real motion.
Need to continue vote.
Anything I need to correct on that?
Mr. Harris, so, so you rescinded your motion to continue the matter, rather you're making a motion to go with alternative three.
Yes, but I, that is correct. However, I wanted to make sure that we did not disregard. The agenda item on, on the table. So if we postpone it for about 30 seconds so we can make this motion first and then come back.
You don't, you don't need, you don't, you don't need to.
You don't need to do that.
You don't need to continue the matter. You just make the motion. To make it clear, make the motion, I think your intent is to go with uh, make a motion to go with alternative three. Is that your motion? I think that's your intent.
So I need a second for that.
You, let's make sure Mr. Harris.
Yes, that is, that is correct and forgive me if I went out of turn here.
No, that's okay. That's okay. That, so that's your motion and now we need a second.
We have a second on uh, alternative three.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor of, let me get it right here. I'm going to make sure I have it right. On the background, prepare and release request, propose, oops, no. No, 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 no. Where is it?
Mr. Mayor, you want, I can help you though.
Yeah.
The motion is alter previous direction and conduct negotiations with the current service provider. That's the motion. You got a second, so we should vote on that.
Okay, correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion fails uh, for lack of a vote to pass. Okay. Um, and now is there any uh, since, since that is taken care of, which this is a process where there are new, so it's, it's great to see them uh, venturing out with it. Um. Any discussion on the cost? Or the contingency or the timeline uh, that McAfee has uh, put forward? Because I know time is of essence for anybody to be able to, any competitive to properly put together proposals, votes and actually the facilities that they would. Need to acquire contracts with. Okay, otherwise, looking for motion?
I'd move staff's recommendation authorized city manager enter into an agreement with Sloan, Bascas and McAfee.
Got it.
Did I get it right, Joe? In an amount of $66,570 conducted competitive procurement process for solid waste services. And uh, prove the sup, the supplemental appropriation, the amount of $73,227 from the solid waste franchise fees.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
That's uh, three to, three to two. Uh, action passes. Thank you very much for the time and effort that was gone and all the information that came out tonight. Okay, we're going to start getting ready to move on with the uh, few things that are left on our list here. Okay. Wow. Man, that was my toughest in 11 years. Um. But I really thank the public for being very good. Uh, um. With one exception. Uh, through the whole process. Uh, moving on now, um, Steve Kregger, uh, presenting of our um, priorities and goal progress report. We hope it looks wonderful because man, we have pushed you guys to the max and we pushed ourselves too.
You have a lot going on in the city. It's exciting to see, isn't it? I do notice that there are four of you right now, so I'm not sure where number five went.
Oh, uh, okay, then I'll wait until number five gets back in.
Okay. Might not want to wait? Okay.
Could be bad momentarily.
Did, oh.
Does someone?
It's going to take a little longer. It's okay. All right. I wasn't sure if someone took him away or something.
Been a long meeting.
I hear a door creaking, so that's a good sign, I believe. Um. Okay, avoid embarrassment. I'll just keep going.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have your uh, goals and priorities that you established at the beginning of each calendar year. Uh, these six items are recurring. Uh. I like to say that they're somewhat inalienable, meaning every community should have these types of goals. Uh, they're in no specific order, but notably you do dedicate a large amount of resources as every city does to public safety. Which is one of the um, base. Um. Purposes of government and also to provide uh, a good infrastructure. Uh, which we continue to work on as a community. Uh, but once again, all of these are important to your council. You have a progress report before you. That highlights some of the areas where staff has been very, working very hard to advance these goals and priorities. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding anything within that report. I think it's more than anything, it's just important that we as staff have the opportunity to demonstrate to you and therefore demonstrate to the community. Uh, that we're putting their tax resources to the best use. And what's nice about it these days with our economy clipping along like it's been, is you see the visual result of that. You see Garden Highway. You see. Even today, uh, the Carriage Square being demolished. And uh, it is remarkable to see the progress that's going on in this community. Yeah. And uh, we have um, the pride, I'll just speak for a moment of, of, you have an executive team with an average tenure of uh. By now approaching likely 20 years uh, with the city, uh, each individually. And so they know this community, they work well in the community and they take, uh, they live uh, in this community or the greater area. Um, those are the people working for you. If you have any questions on uh, this report or anything that has to do with what's going on, please feel free to ask them now or. Um. Of course, ask me any time.
Any other uh, slides on it?
I don't. And I'll, I'll be honest with you. I did, I, I, you use a judgment call on life. And I anticipated that this last item would probably wear you down a little bit. And I didn't anticipate that you would be really anxious to receive a 10-slide presentation that um.
Three or four?
So yeah, my judgment was to do the abbreviated form. So here you have it, folks. Um, if you would like, you can bring me back at another meeting and, and make me do a longer presentation. I'd be happy to do so.
No, no, we all, we usually have pretty long meetings. Um, because of, we're so active and trying to um, help the community get going forward and stuff. I, I will make a comment uh, just a little bit uh, based upon uh, some of the. Um, plans that are coming up, but today I just happened to. I just happened to pass by and see a map on one of the tables in the, um, uh, planning department in Arnoldo's, Arnoldo's little, um, uh, conference office now. By the way, fantastic rea- rearrangement and design and consolidation process going on. Um, really, really great looking, uh,
I'll pass that compliment on, Tim.
Um, and I saw that, and he, you know, asked for a little explanation, and he showed me, uh, some of the, um, items that are popping up, getting numbers when they have a number on them, that means that's something that's being considered. And, uh, like you said, uh, well, we said earlier, the, the first, um, uh, housing project being actually acted upon and started, there are multiple of those that are on the planning and the books and discussion. And s- some of them have numbers, which means they're farther along than others.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in projects, and, and so, uh, that's encouraging to me to see that, you know, that's happening, of course, naturally, by the process. And then also from, uh, the efforts that we're trying to do to make it smoother, electronic process, uh, making it easier to submit plans and actually get meetings and stuff, and, uh, so all these things, and if anybody has suggestions on how to make it even easier for us, please, bring it forward and we'll have staff at least review it and look at it, so. We're open for business, Yuba City is, is, uh, marching forward, so. That's it, I'm sorry, long-winded, after all that.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Steve, um, when we had our workshop on, on the goals and priorities, one of the things that we did come out from that is using our, all of our commissions and do a joint workshop. Have we had that yet, and what was the outcome of that?
You missed it, I'm just teasing.
I thought, yeah, I don't know.
Uh, we have had folks in the city manager's office, uh, working on that issue. Uh, and we have narrowed it down to a couple different folks who can take your council through that process. Um, you know, part of that, I guess for the benefit of the public, the council said, you know, we wanna engage our commissions, we wanna engage the community in the vision of the future of Yuba City, uh, what we are and what we want to be, and what are the resources that we can tap into to take us into the future Yuba City. And that process, um, will, and, uh, take place, uh, during the latter part of this year in early eighteen. Um, so yeah, that, that's, that's been something that we've drawn, drawn more attention to. And how best, uh, we've been looking at the best practices of other communities, Roseville's going through the process right now, Rancho Cordova did it in the recent past, and we're finding, what are these best practices in other communities? Um, and how do we take that forward, so, and that's, that's a fair observation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your update.
Yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, if there's anything else on any of those items, any of those six, you can hit me up cold. Um, I will say, in terms of, uh, um, you know, developing our organization, I just, I do wanna touch upon you, your, your mission for us is the quality service innovation and leadership. Your organization is taking an extraordinary focus on innovation these days. Uh, and how we, uh, break out of, um, uh, the status quo. Um, and that's what's too often in government, there's comfort in the status quo, and we're starting to say, we need to take a more active approach. As the mayor indicated, of, uh, if, if someone's giving us feedback, we don't defend what we do, we say, tell us more, and well, how could we be doing our jobs differently, and that's important to us.
And we're available, as you know, and have been, to help through that process, and, you know, be the buffers with the community with you too, so.
Well, you, you, all of you give us good feedback.
Only wanna help you succeed.
Yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Success, success is important. Okay, for that, thank you. Okay, moving on to twenty, uh, appointments of, uh, uh, commissions and boards, uh, recommendations by the committee. Um, I think there might be a little discussion on this one. Um, any comments from council members as to the choices? And, uh, yes?
When we look at, at building a, a community and community involvement, and certainly, um, with the strategic position of, uh, planning in our, our, uh, that board and how instrumental they are to, um, providing standards and maintaining those standards within the city of Yuba City. Um, I, I guess I'm having a big, a very large problem with the fact that we didn't have more individuals, uh, apply for it. Um, and quite honestly, um, between myself and the, and the world, I'm not, um, on the community involvement side, um, the recommendation, Foteen is a recommendation, um, from her community involvement, um, in, in what she does, uh, whether it be through the down, the DBA, um, the summer stroll and all of those things. Um, I, I just, my vision of, of Foteen is, uh, one, that I, I think lacks a certain level of, um, I don't know, decorum, partially, uh, secondly, um, good, solid relations that would be a negotiable position, one that would reflect well upon the city, um, in trying to advocate for projects. Um, and, and I'm not here to beat her up, I'm, I'm just saying, we have had incredible, uh, individuals on that, uh, board for such a long time, that that's really, I, I guess the, the mark has been set high. And, and I'd like to see that mark stay high. Um, and, and I don't know who all the applicants were. Um, so, so all I know is, is one that I'm seeing here on a, on a sheet of paper. Um, you know, a- again, she does a remarkable job, uh, with different, with different projects, I'm just not sure the vision of, of Yuba City is something that um, I have seen from her. Um, so, I, I guess that's a uh, one of my concerns and, and, um, opposition to that, to that person.
Yeah, I understand, anybody else? I will actually, um, respond a little bit to that, um, I understand, uh, and actually see the point that you're coming from, and you, you know I would, having worked so closely with her and not always agreeing, and seeing some of the instances that you're talking about. Um, the different times that we have interviewed, there was a marked difference between the understanding of the responsibility, and we did not coach anybody in any way, from the time they previously applied to now, they've had to figure out themselves. Um, understanding, um, like, 'cause I didn't start out understanding a lot of this stuff, and then when I noticed that something's not right, something's not being responded to right, to me, I went back and figured out where am I wrong, what am I not doing correctly, how am I not understanding this? Um, there was a significantly, uh, significant difference between the uh, understanding of the responsibility of what a planning commissioner's job is. Is to follow the policies that are there, and then, then if you're a planning commissioner, you're gonna have those documents, and you're gonna have to go through that training to be a planning commissioner. The saving thing on this is it's only until twelve-thirty-one-eighteen. And, uh, for me, the, that would be definitely a testing grounds as to whether they qualify or not, with a short term there figured out, if they haven't figured it out, somebody else can say sorry, 'cause there's actually someone there that I would like to say that to. Um, I must admit it, um, and I understand completely where you're coming from on that. Um, I just really felt that there was a marked difference, since she's no, that person is no longer in a restaurant, no longer in a high-pressure thing, things are completely different, there has been a definite change in, um, the approach and attitude. Um, and I thought, you know, it's worth a try. Um, or we can go back out and, uh, try again for applications, I'm open to that too. I'm, I'm not gonna stand, uh, fall on the sword and stand my ground on this, it's, uh, up to the, uh, uh, the council to decide whether um, they wanna go with the name. It's always, it's always the vote of the council. So, um, any more questions on that or comments, or how would they like to?
Yeah, through the mayor. Um, I'm not gonna repeat everything we just said, 'cause I, I agree with it, I think, um, the role of the planning commission is extremely important, and we need to, um, take that seriously, not that you did not. But, uh, based on the applications that you had, that was one that filtered us way to the top in your mind, which I respect. However, I think we, uh, time is on our side, and your suggestion that perhaps we consider, um, seeking out other, um, alternative applicants, would be, um, I would be in favor of that. In fact, I'll make a motion to do so right now.
Uh, to go out on, uh, specifically the planning?
Yes.
And, but, we do need to move with, um, and Joan Ellis, man, she rose to the top, she's phenomenal. There is, there's no doubt about her on the senior commission, we need somebody like her on there. So, um, uh, with that, um, I have a motion to, um, is it to include Joan Ellis to be passed through, correct, uh, as recommended, and then for, to go back out again to, uh, the, uh, planning commission?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have, uh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay. We will go back out on to, uh, planning. And, uh, Jo- Joan Ellis is now the senior commission representative. Okay, moving on, League of California Cities, that's coming up real quickly. Um, we have some positions that have been recommended, um, by the league to, uh, uh, either oppose or, um, support issues that are out there, there are so many that are just amazing, I'm not sure if, uh, maybe some of them have actually, uh, passed, or what's going on with that, um. And I think we have to appoint a person for the voting, which is oh, wait a minute, that's the end end of the year conference, we're out of I'm the delegate on this, voting delegate. Uh, who's gonna be the alternative? Alternate?
Um, Mayor, we've already turned that into League of California Cities.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I wasn't, I may not have been here.
Right.
That's right, no, I, I was trying to, I didn't hear that, I was out of, I was out of the state, that's right.
As mayor, you're the delegate, and, um, vice mayor
Sorry, I just could not remember.
Is an alternate, and also, um, council member Buckland are alternates.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I remember seeing that report, but I wasn't here, and so it's, and I don't remember the thing on that. There are some resolutions here, um, resolutions are, uh, the League of California Cities calling upon the governor and legislator to enter into discussion with the league and other, uh, public safety stakeholders to identify and implement strategies that will reduce the unintended negative impacts of existing criminal law. Uh, we have a guy that has to do with law here, that, two of them, so, um, your thoughts, please, both of you, if you
And, and through the mayor, um, y- you know, I, I think it would be great, um, if at league we could get Gavin Newsom and Jerry Brown in the same room, and, and find out what some of their, um, illegitimate thoughts are regarding uh, different legalization, um, different um, parameters where individuals are being released, um, into the public, where they are uh, free to murder police officers, to shoot police officers, um, as the most recent incident injured two California highway patrolmen and killed a, a Sacramento County deputy. Um, you know, I, I, I can't speak loud enough to this, um, our, the legislature itself uh, needs to gain a backbone, um, and present to uh, the governor, and our state needs to take, our voters need to take a position um, to back a strong legislature that takes the criminal element and deals with them in a way that is consistent with federal law, and yet, um, incarcerates those that need to be left incarcerated for a duration of time uh, that lack the ability to be rehabilitated through any other process that may have been conjured up in a legislator's mind, um, and presented to the public with some logical argument that is failed to date. Um, so I, I strongly stand, uh, behind a resolution that, uh, sends a direction uh, that we're not going to take, um, these laws, they need to reverse direction, uh, and steer the ship in the right direction. Uh, reverse, you know, reverse the propellers and steer it the right direction, we need to get turned around a hundred and eighty degrees and, and take this serious, or California's gonna fall off the abyss into criminality.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I cannot disagree with that and will not. Um, my son is a Sacramento County sheriff's deputy, was a good friend of the officer. So he's not doing well on that one. I have a lot of friends actually from down there that are very upset. Um, and then resolution, um, number two, unless you wanna make a comment? You know?
I don't mind, it would just be exactly the same, uh, as eloquently expressed by Councilman Buckland. Um, I like the fact that you summed it up exactly, we are going in the complete opposite direction that we need to be going, one hundred and eighty degrees wrong.
Absolutely.
Let's take a hard line, the desert's a big place, plenty of room for a lot more prisons, in my opinion. Um, and I think about that every time I, uh, go to a funeral, which I will be doing on Thursday down in Sacramento, which I, it's, it's unconscionable to me how that's not, uh, how, anyone would think that would be a good idea.
Anyway.
I could go on and I'll get emotional if I do, so I'm not gonna.
Okay, then now I'll move on to resolution two, uh, of the League of California Cities, supporting legislation amending Government Code Section three-eight-six-one-one to clarify the definition of local control providing broad statutory authority for local officials to determine emergency service levels and direct emergency medical response within their jurisdictions. This is one that I really, uh, am not, um, heavily up to date on, since it's not my committee that I'm on at the League of Cities, so, um.
Mr. Mayor, just, uh, for background, we did have, uh, Chiefs, uh, Daley and Landon review both of these. And, uh, they did, uh, concur with the league's direction on both of these, and as I recall, Chief Daley is in the audience, in case you want him to expound upon that, uh, but, you know, this is a local control issue, and, uh, he felt strongly that that needs to be retained by local jurisdictions and not, um,
I think we all need, want local control, um, which has not been a good, uh, thing, um, uh, happening within the state of California this year. It's been pretty much, uh, everything has been taking away local control. So we must support keeping that within our, our community.
And, and through the mayor, just a comment I'd like to make is, um, our, our great, uh, four-term, uh, governor, uh, Jerry, uh, Brown used the term in the last election, two, four, six years ago, uh, used the term that he wanted to return local control, um, to to, uh, California, to its cities and everything. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna confusion on local control on this issue and statutory issues versus his taking money away from jurisdictions, uh, and putting it into the state coffers to tell the cities, go fend for yourself. Um, that was his concept of lo- local control. So I just wanna make it perfectly clear
His record.
That, that his position six years ago, um, was to take money from us with that concept. This would be to gain back, um, the actual authorities required to be able to do our jobs, am I correct, Chief?
Should have asked you.
Councilman Buckland, you are correct. This is, uh, old legislation back in the 50s, which kind of defined what, uh, local jurisdictions would do regarding the fire services and as far as EMS service in their community. It's outdated legislation. Um, some of the state has an idea of how those services should be provided. This legislation provides, puts decision-making back at our local level so I can bring to the council and, and to the city manager what we think is best for our community and provide that level of service versus someone else telling us how to do it.
I like it. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, um, so we will be at the League of California Cities, uh, conference, some of us, I'm not sure how many. Um, 13th, 14th and 15th will be voting on these. Uh, this is in Sacramento. So, um, we'll be down there, uh, fighting for the communities there. Um, and I think we're down to council reports. Phew. All right, um, Councilmember Buckland.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I noticed that, uh, after all the melee, uh, Dan Flores departed the room, our, our, uh, supervisor that represents the, uh, the lower portion of Uba City. Um, he always makes sure that at Secog, that he follows any comments I make with the fact that he represents the, the citizens of Uba City on the Sutter County Board. Um, so I wanted to give him all due honor, um, but he didn't stay for it. Um, but it does go hand in hand with our, uh, I did attend, uh, Secog, uh, board of directors meeting, uh, with Dan. And, um, uh, we did have the opportunity to, to, uh, go through a number of processes, um, down there. And one of the things that we received information on was, um, how the franchise tax board and all of our, uh, sales taxes and everything flow through the state. And we had an expert, uh, giving us this information. The expert spent nearly, uh, 25 minutes trying to explain the flow of tax dollars through, um, uh, amazon.com and, um, out of state purchases to local purchases to large purchases. And by the end of it, um, this expert said, well, wait a minute. I'm going to have to go, um, over to Board of Equalization and get some more answers because I don't know exactly where the tax dollars are flowing to and from and at what rate, um, and how they're being shared in county pools because of the various agreements throughout the state of California, um, with the state of California and, and how they have all chose to split up taxes. So, I left far more confused from that informational input, um, than, than anything else. And so that led to a great conversation between, uh, Supervisor Flores and myself on the way home, uh, that we needed to get more information and we, we personally, in the Sutter County, uh, portion of this, we're, we're going to start digging through that information as it's provided to us from the Board of Equalization. Um, after that, I did attend, um, a workshop, um, and it was a large community workshop called Civic Lab. Our city manager was also there, uh, along with Supervisor Flores and really looking at transportation disruptive technologies, uh, within, uh, transportation and looking to see how things are going to transpire, not just now, but in five years. Autonomous vehicles, um, how, how you park, how you operate, how they're going to get tested, how, um, bus systems are going to be tested. And the very first public transportation bus test was done in West Sacramento, just a matter of a couple of months ago. It was, it's illegal to do it on the road because, uh, the state of California won't allow it. So it was done in, uh, the Ballfield parking lot. That test went remarkably well. Uh, so, so what we are looking for is the opportunity for Sacramento and this region, this, this six county region, to become a test bed for much of this disruptive technology, whether it be, um, the use of, uh, modified Uber type vehicles for our, uh, transportation needs, um, even locally, uh, the dial-a-ride type, um, activities are going on. Buses that run routes at different hours that don't have a high ridership, uh, could be replaced with Uber and Lyft. Those type of things were what's being discussed in this public setting and looking at, at increasing ridership, but yet reducing costs, um, overall. So, uh, this is a, a completely out of the box, um, uh, discussion. And in fact, will expand into our area, uh, should we choose to become one of the, um, team members here locally. And we're going to seek out, uh, public input on whether we want to set up a team, um, and contribute. It's a small, uh, monetary contribution to be able to get into this. But we certainly, um, would gain some by being a rural community willing to step in and have, uh, some of that technology be tested here or, or developed as a need for here, um, because there's not going to be many others that fit our same model. So I, I think, um, and I'm not going to speak for the city manager, but, uh, I came out of it rather encouraged, um, that there is a place in this, there's a place in that discussion, uh, for Uba City. Uh, then also just the other day, along with the mayor and, um, uh, Councilmember Cardoza, uh, we attended the Sutter County Schools, um, their, their adult ed, uh, program has been working on a, a number of, uh, different projects. It's an incredible, um, kind of reverse engineered educational opportunity for adults that never got their high school diploma. They worked towards that diploma. Um, but shockingly, um, they found that the number one thing that employers needed of their employees in, in the Uba Sutter, Sutter County, Uba County area was the ability to read a tape measure, um, because they just didn't know how. So part of their educational process was to build up a system, uh, where they had to use a tape measure. They learned fractions from the tape measure itself. And in that real application, they started to get it. As a result, their test scores didn't just go up marginally. They went up significantly in their testing. But they built a mobile, um, book share box that is at Shanghai Bend. It's blue, orange and yellow. You can't miss it. It looks like a birdhouse. Uh, but you can go there and take out books to read, the neighborhood can, take out books to read and replace it with a book that you want to put into it. It will be monitored for appropriate books, uh, being placed in there. So, so we'll see how that, how that works. Um, they built benches and all kinds of things. Uh, remarkable, uh, really a remarkable group of, of kids. It's, it is pretty cool. Now, the last little piece, and I'm going to set this up as they're getting ready for it to go. I have a video, um, I've been working on some, some video for, uh, Sutter Butte Flood Control, um, on the levee. So I'm going to catch you up to date of about a week and a half ago of actual work up on the levee. Um, and, and I'll try to narrate as best I possibly can with my very little knowledge on, um, video, I mean, video on levee repairs of what is going on up there. First part of the process, um, is to degrade the levees down to a height that, that they can get first the base, uh, to do much of what you're going to see in the, in the future. There's three and a half miles of this. This is emergency repair, um, that is being funded, not by the local assessment dollars, but by the, um, by DWR, primarily the state of California. Uh, part of that degrading and, and building up, um, their, the slurry pads and also, uh, for excavation, uh, is all part of that pre-work, uh, that was going on, uh, as soon as they had, had gotten the degrading done. This is actually between the two bridges. This is a, one of the first areas to finish up. And, uh, they are finished to the certain point that it's at now. It's in a, a resting period to let, uh, the settling of the, of the material, the slurry wall, um, in there. This is where we had the most significant problems with boils and seepage. Uh, this is adjacent to, uh, Willow Island. Uh, it's an extra wide, uh, sectional levee. Part of that happened over the course of years and different repairs that went on to that section. Um, the process of mixing the slurry is all done with heavy equipment. Uh, you'll see the, the, uh, excavators actually working it. They work it with bulldozers. Uh, part of what, what they're doing is they have to get the proper consistency. The trench that you see there is about 72, uh, feet deep. And these excavators are long reach excavators, uh, that are going down into that trench, removing the material. That material gets mixed, um, in with the, uh, consistent water that you see. There's a bentonite and water, uh, material that holds the walls apart. While they, uh, mix this material, it all has to be placed back in the trench within 48 hours. Uh, so there is a time constraint. They can't take time off, um, but they are out there working full-time. Um, there is all kinds of geological, the, the geotecs are out there to make sure that they're into the proper level of clay, uh, before they can start putting this material in. It's a 24-hour process, so they're working at night. Some of these shots are, are made at, at 10 o'clock at night. Up on the levees, uh, lighting and, and everything else. Um, and every one of the workers, those guys love it when it's 110 degrees outside, uh, because they have what they call the remarkable shift and the other guys have, um, the bacon shift. Um, as it was explained to me today, they just sit there and fry on that levee, uh, for their 12-hour shifts. Um, again, not much is slowing these guys down. Uh, they are progressing at the pace that, that they believe, um, will get this job done by the first part of October. If you really want to see the depth in which they're digging, uh, this is a fairly good perspective. Uh, he'll drive that, the, uh, excavator all the way down into the, into the slurry. It's kind of hard on the equipment, they tell me. It might wear some things out. And, uh, once he gets the bucket load, they bring it back up, occasionally test it again. Uh, the geotecs test it, uh, just to make sure that they're in their, in their proper materials. Uh, so that, that can be mixed and then re-entered, um, as part of that slurry consistency. Um, that slurry is much like wet, gooey, uh, I would use a many other terms, but it's, it's kind of like a stucco is, is what it's much like. Um, when it's all done and, and put back in, they cap it. It sits for 21 days and settles. Then they come back, scrape off their, their cap cover. And then, uh, the vibration and everything, uh, begins. They, they put the final cap on the, on the slurry wall. Uh, so we're excited with, with the, uh, the level of activity. All the heavy equipment, uh, from between the two bridges has been removed and put down next to the, uh, airport. So they're, they're working on that, um, down at the airport, which is again about three miles from, from that piece of equipment, way down the levees past the, the, uh, the two bridges. So, yeah, again, things are progressing and, um, and we're excited. There'll be a full video on, on this and that video's, uh, being, um, scheduled back in Washington DC to show the, uh, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee once the project is completed, because this is a model project, uh, for our nation. And, um, it, I, one of the little point that, one reason they can move, uh, fairly quick through this is this is an emergency repair and, um, it does, it doesn't completely negate the cultural sensitivity, uh, of the project. Um, but there are limits as to what can stop the, the progress because of the emergency repair. Uh, so there are, uh, anthropologists and cultural awareness folks that are on site all the time. Um, but they keep moving through the, the process unless they, they come to a significant find and they don't anticipate doing that through this section, so. With that, that's all I have, Mayor.
There we go. Thank you. Um, next one, I'm going to go with, uh, uh, Mr. Harris.
Once again, I don't have a video. However, however.
I'll put one together for you.
That's all good. Uh, with stuff related to my boards and commissions, Beal LLC was primary, um, event that I attended. Uh, meeting with those folks, getting to know my new, uh, liaison commander out there at Beal, Lieutenant Colonel Dalby, who's in charge of the Civil Engineering Squadron out there. Um, very good guy, met with a lot of the other general, not general, the, uh, colonel and lieutenant colonels out there and on some of their staff. Basically, the intent is to support them. Uh, we went to the, also the Uba Sutter Stand Down and Colonel Broadwell, the commander of Beal, asks, I believe it was Mr. Mayor, you and I, uh, what can I do for you? And, uh, our collective response to him was, we should be asking you that.
Yeah.
And, um,
We did.
Yeah. And, um, he, they just have a very good, uh, heart, very good intention. They, they respect our community. We likewise respect them. And, uh, uh, once again, it's an honor to be a part of that, that group. I'm still getting started. Uh, they've had a few change of commands over there. And so this, uh, besides just the initial meeting, I'll have an event on Friday that I'll be attending and, uh, it should be a good time. Um, we have, uh, Uba Sutter Arts Council, I, not necessarily formally as a part of my role here in the council, but because of my role here in the council, they have asked me to be a part of their board. And just quickly, uh, if you'd see the, some of the utility boxes around town being painted, um, that's them. A project they got a grant to do. Uh, I was particularly in favor of the fact that they're going to be painting a box over by Winco with a bunch of chickens on it. So that's going to be good. Is it done? All right. Um, so that's good. They're good folks. They have a few shows going on. If anybody is inclined to, uh, support them and attend an event, I would highly encourage you to do so. Um, the transportation priorities meeting, um, we're recently out at Caltrans District Three Office in Marysville, uh, emceed by Congressman Garimandi and Lamolfa. Uh, very good, uh, attendance out there and, yeah, not necessarily over here in Uba City, but it is part of our community where they're going to be protecting or improving, uh, Highway 70 northbound, north out of Marysville. Um, since 2010 alone, at least 33 fatalities have occurred in that stretch of road. I'm having worked out there in many capacities, if you will. Uh, it is, um, uh, no pun intended, an accident waiting to happen because it, it is just people drive out of control. So the goal is eventually to get two lanes in each direction with one center lane down the middle, two-way turn lane. I happened to send a few people that, uh, worked for me out there that afternoon and in five hours, they took one person to jail, took three, over three pounds of marijuana off the road and issued 27 citations. And that, that quick. So it's clearly a problem. It's clearly something we need to address actively. It's my intention to do so, um, until we can get that roadway widened and improved and make it more safe. Now, the timeline is five years out for that to be completed. Um, I mentioned we went to the Uba Sutter Stand Down just briefly. Um, very good event, uh, supporting of our veterans, uh, the folks who served. Um, it was very good. It's, it's growing exponentially. Uh, I think every year, a lot of relevant services, someone gave me the figure that if they would have had to, um, seek out and obtain those services that were present at the stand down, uh, kind of an à la carte basis, without that one-stop shopping venue, it would have taken them o- o- over a month to get from A to B. And not to mention transportation and making appointments and everything else. So it's a very good thing. Um, I give a lot of services, a lot of assistance to those folks who, who need it and deserve it, in my opinion. Other than that, I'm good.
All right.
Okay, it's getting late, so I'll be quick about this. Uh, for meetings, I attended the Uba Sutter Transit Authority Meeting, our Regional Housing Authority, Regional Waste Management, Economic Development Commission and Planning Commission. Chamber events, we had, uh, Business After Hours and it's for the Wings of Ingalls Foundation. They're sort of like a, a Mc- Ronald McDonald House, except they're in Northern California. They help take care of families when their children are sick and they, they, it's all paid for. The families are all taken care of and paid for. Uh, attended the Business Connection Breakfast. Uh, the topic was workforce development with, uh, Councilman Harris. And then my monthly ambassador meetings. Uh, for community and city events, uh, attended the Sutter Buttes, uh, flood agency, the public meeting at Boyd Hall that was updating the residents on levee construction and the progress and the plans. And then I also had a tour with the mayor, uh, on our levees here at Second Street. And I had, I also had the honors of, uh, this month, I got to, uh, do the monthly phone call updates of Orbil Dam with, uh, with Mayor Cleveland. I also was at the Vet Stand Down. Uh, I, uh, did two, did a couple of- I also was at the Vet Stand Down, uh I uh did two, did a couple of days there. Uh I was, I had me being the greeter, I had the honors of, hm?
The official greeter.
The official greeter, I had the honors, we, the only reason why I know this is because I helped make the bags. I shook hands with seven hundred and fifty veterans in two days. So it was a, it was a wonderful event, a great turnout and wonderful event. I attended the swearing-in ceremony for our two new community services officers at the PD. I went down with our uh sobriety checkpoint officers, it was rather a peaceful night till we had a fire down the street and they shut the roads down, then it got kind of busy after that. Uh with city events, I went, uh attended the Solar Eclipse Tailgate Party with city staff at the water treatment plant. Did the dedication with John at Shanghai. Uh I dedicated some time for the Qantas, for the Hogs and Hulas and Blues and Brews Festival. Uh attended the Epic Eighties Dance Party uh at Councilman Buckland's uh building, uh Millennium. Uh for, it was for the stand for the silent. And I uh attended the uh Nicholas Parade um uh yesterday, excuse me, Monday. Uh wonderful turnout, they said there was a thousand people there, there was more than a thousand, but it's getting bigger and bigger every year, it's a wonderful time. The five thousand? Yeah, anyway, it was a great time, yeah, but it was a great time and uh if you haven't been there, I encourage you to go next year because it's a wonderful time and that's it for me.
Great, thank you.
Okay, mine's sh- very short because since our, yes, since our last council meeting, I was literally on vacation. I got back on the twenty-eighth and have not had a meeting because with the holidays, so this is my first meeting upon returning, so. Back to work.
Yes.
Yeah, tough one.
Well, um since I wasn't here, uh the the last meeting, um I was helping my son move to Tampa Bay, Florida. Military sending him there and just making uh, after my daughter-in-law having operations, it was difficult for her to to be doing it, so we, my wife and I took time off and did that. Uh that's the family one. Other than that, I did go to Fracmid, uh Air Quality Management District uh District uh meetings. Uh Sabufka, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, that was the week before I had gone and Gilcizer uh Durant's District, also attended the um Financial uh Committee because we needed a quorum regarding the uh twenty-five million dollars that the state was giving to uh the Sabufka to do this emergency um work that we're having done, which they're just, everybody's just shocked that we were able to get that and we're somewhat surprised too, but very pleased. Um and then from there, many of the other meetings, the community things, I attended also. Um and uh like like uh Preet said, we're all back to work again and uh I'm getting, uh everybody's back from vacation, so I'm getting phone calls every day, two or three times a day for meetings and coming and chatting and uh issues, so uh people are are back uh back at it again. With that, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.